Gentlemen and welcome to the Town of Situate Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, January 6, 2015. Happy New Year. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have an acceptance of the agenda that has been duly posted.
The move.
Seconded by Mr. Vigniani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any walk-ins this evening? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next, which happens to be the report of the town administrator. Tricia, good evening.
Thank you, good evening. Just a few quick items. One, I just wanted to remind the board and folks who may be viewing that the final public forum on the proposed public safety complex and middle school is scheduled for tomorrow evening, Wednesday, January 7th at 7:00 PM at the Situate Harbor Community Building. So if folks have any questions that they want answered or feel that they need more information, we'll have the architects there as well as personnel from police, fire, and the school department in attendance tomorrow evening. And also, the debt exclusion votes are scheduled for January 10th. The polls are open 7 to 6:00 PM. I did want to update the board on the FEMA appeal process. Just to remind you, the town submitted two appeals to FEMA on the new proposed flood elevation maps. One of those was accepted and is awaiting final review later this year. The one that was not accepted, the appeal that was not accepted, we, for all intents and purposes, appealed the appeal, and that's done through a scientific resolution panel. Because the Town of Marshfield and the Town of Situate did this jointly, the panel is going to consist of five people outfitted by education and expertise in the United States. And Marshfield gets to choose two panelists, the Town of Situate gets to choose two, and FEMA gets to choose one. Those names need to be provided to FEMA in the next week or two. We received those resumes and have been working with the two consultants that we used for the appeals, Ransom Engineering and Woods Hole. They've provided their recommendations to us. And former selectman Rick Murray reviewed all of them as well in a very short timeframe and provided us recommendations. I'm pleased to say that from the three that we've got, there's almost universal agreement on who to use. This is a very technical expertise that FEMA uses. They actually subcontract the whole process out to another agency to ensure that it's neutral. And once we send those names to FEMA, the scientific resolution panel will be scheduled. We expect the whole process to be done in April. I just want to give you a little bit about that process. It's a closed process. Ransom Engineering, who did the appeal, will be able to present the basis for our appeal and then answer questions. It's all done by video conferencing because these scientists are from all over the country. So they all video conference in. We've arranged for a facility to do that. Bob Calvin, who is town council in Marshfield, who many of you know, is serving as our special council as well, so the towns can coordinate. And then we sort of wait, and then they issue their decision. So I will keep you posted, but at least there's progress moving. The appeal that has been accepted, the one that Woods Hole did, will not even be scheduled or heard until after the scientific resolution panel has completed its work and made its findings. So we're not even looking at the second stage of the appeal on the FEMA maps until, I would say, best case sometime in maybe July. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but want to keep you updated on that.
Sean, you had a question?
Not about that, just about before we move on.
I should have grabbed you earlier, sorry. On the first item that you were addressing.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry. No, if she was done, just had to do, you reminded me of the billboard I saw on Drift Way, the job fair. Could you just say, I have an idea what it is, but say it again, because people have asked me, Open's and DPW.
Sure. So it's no surprise, I think, to the board that we've had a challenge in the past year or so in finding qualified people to serve. It was wastewater treatment operators and water department operators. When there's a vacancy in those departments, we need to hire people that possess certain licenses, because the town has to have certain state and federal licenses to ensure we're producing clean water and the system's working properly, and also meet a number of reporting regulations for the wastewater treatment plant. So there's a series of licenses, all the way up to nine, I think, for sewer, that people are required to do. So because there is a very high scarcity of qualified people with licenses right now, we've had difficulty replacing those positions. So in consultation with Mr. Cafferty, we decided that it would be a good idea, I'm just checking to see if he was here, to have a job fair at the Situate Harbor Community Building and encourage people to come in if they have questions about a career in wastewater or water. And that way, we can grow our own people. We send them to the training, and that way, it might be something folks have not considered. We get to see people, they become aware of the DPW, and also learn about the other DPW operations in the future if we have an opening in public grounds or highway. So we're really looking forward to it. We haven't tried like, something like this, but there'll be DPW staff on hand to answer questions about the work, and hopefully we'll get some applications out of that.
Tuesday, the 13th, was it?
13th, yes.
I think so. I saw the sign today.
Thanks.
Oh, there you are.
Getting back to the FEMA, you said it's a closed process. Closed in that it's only with the experts versing back and forth, or is there an observing room where people, that anybody wants to go watch scientists talk?
I don't even know if the town manager of Marshfield and I will be allowed to attend.
So it's closed as in that process?
Certainly, yes.
But the appeal with respect to Woods Hole, that would be more of an open process, I would assume?
I can't answer that with certainty. I can't. That's an entirely different process. Part of the reason this has taken so long to happen is because there has not been a scientific resolution panel on the East Coast, I believe. So it's a learning process for FEMA as well. And actually, we're informing the regional FEMA folks of what's happening because it's being administered entirely out of Washington, DC.
Interesting. Sorry, interrupted your final, the...
The last item, it's no surprise to folks, and we get calls and we watch it every day. As you know, the turbine's been down for a few weeks, so I wanted to give the board an update so people at home are aware. And I've asked Mr. Bangat to provide the board with an update, a brief update.
Al, good evening.
Good evening. How are you? I have a bunch of numbers, so I thought it might be easy as if I just give you a sheet with the numbers on it.
Thanks.
The turbine is down now. The owners of the turbine are working diligently to get the parts to repair it. It's actually the same fault that occurred this summer, a fault with a device called the converter, which converts the power that the turbine produces into power that synchronizes with National Grid's power lines. It's fairly complicated and is specific to this turbine, the parts that are needed. Apparently, the parts are now coming from Austria, and there's been a vacation in Austria of two weeks long, so the parts are not forthcoming. However, the owners of the turbine have more at stake than we do. Of course, every time it's not turning, we're not paying them 8.9 cents. And yet, they're still paying for their operational maintenance costs, paying off the capital costs, et cetera. What we're doing is we, when it's not turning, we are potentially having an opportunity cost, they weren't a loss, an opportunity loss. However, it's interesting, I did the math on it today. In the first year, the turbine produced 3.6 million kilowatt hours. This is the first operational year. It produced 3.6 million kilowatt hours, and the net benefit to the town was $183,000. In the second operational year, which was completed in March of 2014, the turbine produced a little less electricity, 3.5, but we received $236,000. We received more money in the second year than the first year because the cost of electricity went up. When the cost of electricity goes up and the base stays the same, that we pay for it, then we get a bigger slice, if you will. In the current year, which started in April, the turbine has produced 1.4 million kilowatt hours. We've received already $135,000. And if it turns conservatively, if it starts turning again the middle of this month through March, it'll produce another million kilowatt hours. That's because January, February, March, and April are the biggest times of production for this turbine. It's the windiest time. Then we would expect to receive, on top of the 135, an additional $110,000. However, it still won't make what we consider is the guaranteed production. The guaranteed production is it will produce at least 3 million kilowatt hours in a year. The contract we have says that if it fails to produce 3 million kilowatt hours per year, then they pay us for the lost opportunity. And the calculation on that is another $40,000. So that's a very conservative calculation based just, I didn't want to puff it up with the fact that electricity is now running 23 cents a kilowatt hour. But we would expect then, in the course of this year, adding those three things up, that we will see an income this year of $285,000 from the turbine. Now, that's not to say that if it ran all year long, we would have still made more. But the bottom line is, we're covered for 3 million kilowatt hours of production this year, and we'll make $285,000. Now, looking back over the year, in April and May, it was down for 24 days. That presumably started with a lightning strike in early April, and then by late April, it stopped turning. Took them 24 days to fix it. In July and August, it was down for 50 days. And currently, it's been down for 28 days. So we've lost about 100 days of production in this year. If we'd had that 100 days, we still would have, we would have had more money coming in than what we're going to get this year, but at least we're covered for a baseline of 3 million kilowatt hours, which will be more than we made in the last two years.
Questions from the board?
Just a quick question. Is the general fund, is that the taxes they pay for having the structure?
Yes. The way the contracts are set up is, at the time that the contracts were let for this and the solar, there was no idea to calculate what taxes would be. So rather than have bidders come in not knowing what taxes they'd have to pay, we said, "Give us the price for the bottom line, assuming no taxes, and then when taxes are applied, what we'll do is you'll pay us in taxes and in electricity," so that they knew what contract to make with us from the beginning. Yes.
Great. Sean?
I was just going to ask, Al, are other towns or other operators having this problem? Like in Kingston, there's three or four of them, and, you know, Boston, this one. You must be, you must know a lot about these things now.
Honestly, I haven't, I'm afraid to say, I haven't really paid much attention to what's happening. I don't know. I could check, though. I will do that.
I just was kind of curious.
I know there's controversy in every town, different levels of controversy around these, you know, there's a net benefit, net public benefit, but there are individual situations that are not benefited, and in some cases, you could say, have taken a step backwards, much like when the train comes through. But there's a net public benefit to the town.
Right, right, right. Thanks.
Thank you. Yep. Al, thanks. Two things. What's the term on this contract with the current provider?
It is 15 years with two five-year extensions. Or it could be 20 years with one five-year extension.
That was 20.
No, it's 15 with two.
With two five-year?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, is there any type of clause or contingency that we can go back in and look at that covers us for the number of days that they're inoperable? I mean, even though we still have a net positive of 285, we're certainly losing the potential that we should be...
Right. No, there isn't. When we were, when the Energy Committee was looking at the different proposals put to us, different companies, one of the things we were concerned about is, how are we going to know if they're going to maintain this thing? And so we began to look at clauses like, well, you'll have to have spare parts on hand, and you'll have to have a call within a certain amount of time and everything else. And we finally decided that the best way to recognize the mutual benefit of keeping it running, and also to protect the town, was to put in this guarantee. And so we asked for the guarantee at 3 million. It's interesting that in the two previous production years, it produced 3.6, which is not tremendously more than 3 million. It's just this year, we're benefiting the fact, if you will, benefiting, that the cost of National Grid's electricity is up, so therefore, the benefit from the turbine is up.
Okay.
But in the contract, there are clauses for any sorts of default. There's contract clauses in here. In fact, we have on deposit a large sum of money with a treasurer who holds it in account, I think it's $150,000, maybe more, I can't remember, but in case it needed to be removed. If the company were not able to follow through and need to be removed, it would become ours. We would have money to take it down, and it would be ours to dispose of if we needed to. It's a good company. I'm not concerned about that, but, you know, we tried to, before the dance started, make sure that our dance card was protected in many ways as possible.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Al, just a more of a technical question. I'm not sure how to ask it exactly, but so January, February, obviously, we can conduct more electricity because of the wind. There's a control on the turbine, though. Is that correct? So in other words, in the summertime, if we let it go wide open on some of those windy days, would be, in other words, are we grandfathering the, what's the best way to put it? Are we controlling it because of flicker in the summer more than we are in the winter, I guess?
No. It actually runs on its own accord when it's running. Let's just say it's running. Okay. It runs on its own accord.
With no control on the place?
With no control on it. You know, they'll have a day or so of maintenance here and there.
Okay.
But it's just that the, if you look over the last three-year history we have with it, or the two-year actual history we have with it, and you look at the study that was done by the consultants that were hired before, by the Energy Committee and you guys before it, is that the wintertime is the windiest time. And in fact, for instance, the wind we had yesterday, it would have shut down for, because it would be too windy. It can only handle up to a certain level of wind, and then it tilts its wings, veins, so that it doesn't spin and it locks.
Got you.
So it doesn't get too tattered. But in the summer, on windy days, or in the spring, fall, it'll just keep running.
Thank you.
Yes.
Al, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Tricia, I think that concludes your report.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Great. I'm going to move on to a discussion vote of the 2015 Town Election Date Change. Our esteemed clerk, Kathy Curran, if you don't mind coming on up. Now, this is the same situation we ran into last year.
Correct.
Just for the audience, can you just briefly explain?
So according to our bylaws, the annual town meeting will be held on the second Monday of April, and the election follows on the sixth Saturday after town meeting. This year, it falls, let's see, the town meeting is April 13th, the election will fall on May 23rd, which puts it on the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. It makes it a little bit harder to get volunteers in to tally at the end of the night. I'm running for election again, so my participation is kind of limited to what I am able to do as far as write-ins and things like that. So this requires a vote from the Board of Selectmen and a request to the Governor's Office. And now we have new administration. That's why I hope to have jumped on this sooner, only because of the change in administration up at the Governor's Office. And unfortunately, that didn't happen, so I'm trying to do this as soon as possible, if it's in the cards. So it requires a vote by the Board of Selectmen, I believe it's a, I think unanimous vote. I actually, I don't even think it matters. Anyhow, in a letter from the Board of Selectmen Chairman, Mr. Danahue, to the Governor, it's brought to the attention Town Council. Jim Toomey called Lynn Montague at the Governor's Office last year. I'd like him to be able to contact tomorrow if this is okay with you, if this gets voted through tonight, before the new administration takes place, because Lynn can give us the heads-up of if she's staying or going. Okay? And also, it requires Jim Cantwell to bring this before the Governor as well, the State House. So it's an act of legislature. It's a bill.
You're looking to move it from Saturday, May 23rd?
To May 30th.
Saturday, May 30th, seven days later.
Yes.
Motion? Questions from the board at all?
No.
Good. Motion, please.
Move to approve the change, move to approve the change in date on the annual town election to May 30th, 2015.
Motion by Mr. Vigniani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Get the letter, whatever it is.
It's all set. Lorraine has it. Not that I was assuming anything.
That's okay. Kathy, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year, everybody.
Yeah, you only have one more day, right?
Thank you.
Thursday the new inauguration.
One more day, what?
Thursday, the inauguration.
Yeah, right. Moving on, 6:20. Almost right to the point. A presentation from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, otherwise known as the MAPC Parking Study Recommendations. Ms. Jessica Robinson from the Transportation, or the Transportation Coordinator from the MAPC is here with us tonight. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Welcome.
We've been waiting for this report for a long time, and excited to hear that you've completed it and are presenting, so the floor is yours.
I'm glad you're excited. Thank you for having me. Excuse me. So just, I want to save some time for discussion at the end, so I'll go through this pretty quickly, but we wanted to summarize the, what we did with the parking study and the results that we found, and then get into a little bit our recommendations for what steps the town can take to improve the parking situation in the Situate Harbor area. So MAPC is the Regional Planning Agency for Greater Boston. We represent 101 cities and towns, including Situate, and we have done a number of parking projects around our region recently. You may have met, or some of you may have met Sarah and Eric. They presented a couple months ago to the EDC. Sarah is out on maternity leave right now, so, but all three of us have been involved in the project all along. No, I'm sorry, I'm going to try and fix that little box. I don't know what that is.
Uh-oh. Did we lose?
No, I'm just, I was trying to get, there was a little box in the way. Okay, I think that's better. Okay, so we did data collection on three different occasions, a weekday both in August and October, and then a Saturday in August as well. All of them were very nice days. We were looking at the existing situation, so what are all the different parking regulations, like time limits and other restrictions, the total amount of parking, that's what we call the capacity, and then the occupancy, so how much of the parking is full, and the duration, how long all of those cars are staying parked in the same spot. And then we can tell what are the peak areas and what are the peak times. So this was our study area. I'm sorry, it's a little bit, the projector is cutting things off a little bit. I'm not sure what to do about that. But we were doing all of the on-street parking on Front Street, and then the Coal Parkway main lot, the Mill Wharf lot, which is private, but we understand it's, you know, very important to sort of the downtown functioning. And then we did spot checks, so not as frequently, just a little occupancy check on some of the other off-street parkings, such as the church down at the bottom of the screen, the Village Market, and then up on Jericho Road, there are, there's the boat launch area, and then another town-owned lot, and then a private...
Marina.
Marina, thank you. So this entire study area is about a five-minute walk. It's just a quarter of a mile, just for frame of reference. So definitely not too far for people, you know, going to, say, TK O'Malley's or something up towards the north end, to park towards the southern end, although obviously, people prefer to always park as close as they can. It's actually not that far. So we first, we took a look at all the different regulations. Mostly, it's unrestricted, and then most of the on-street is one hour, and then there are just a few other things, like the Harbor Master and a couple of loading zones. So it's pretty consistent. We talked to a bunch of business owners in the area and got their thoughts on the parking situation. Generally, you know, people noted that it does get very busy at certain peak times, especially in the summer and holidays, and that it's more of an issue for the businesses towards the north end, because it just feels like the bulk of the available parking is a little bit further away. And then loading can sometimes be an issue, depending on the business. You know, some of them have a good loading area and some of them don't. So in the summer, we found that it was definitely pretty busy, especially the Mill Wharf lot got pretty much completely full in the early afternoon. There was some space open in the Coal Parkway parking lot, and then some space open also on-street. Generally, 85% is sort of a good target occupancy rate, because that means, for example, with on-street parking, that means that there's about one space open per block, and so it's still pretty easy to find a space, but you don't have a lot of wasted, empty spaces. So the on-street and the Coal Parkway are doing okay, but the Mill Wharf is definitely packed. So the shaded colors, again, I apologize that it's kind of cut off by the projector. The red is 90% occupancy and higher, and then it goes down to the darker blue is 0 to 40% occupancy. So you can see there's definitely, it's very full in Mill Wharf and the sort of northern end of Coal Parkway, but then the southern end of Coal Parkway is pretty empty. One thing we noticed throughout is that the on-street spaces are mostly being used by people staying under an hour, which is great. That's what you want to see. You want the people who are just popping in for a quick errand to park on-street, and if people are coming, you know, to the movie theater or to have a, you know, lunch and then shopping and whatever, you want them to park in the off-street spaces. So that's great. This is functioning pretty well. Also, you know, more than half of the people in Coal Parkway are also parking for less than an hour. At the same time, we do have a large number of people parking for a very long time in some of these off-street lots. So about a quarter of all the spaces in the Coal Parkway lot were used by vehicles that were staying for more than six hours. So this is the summer weekday. We saw similar trends. The summer Saturday was even busier, but similar trends. You can see that. It's busy pretty much everywhere, except for that southern end of the Coal Parkway lot. And same thing, we have good turnover with the on-street spaces, but then also a lot of people parking for a very long time in the off-street spaces. The fall weekday was definitely less busy. Mill Wharf was still the busiest area. And, yeah, you can see that here, kind of a similar pattern of distribution of where people are parking, but just overall, a little bit, a little bit less busy. And then, again, same kind of distribution of time. So some of the issues that we found, just to run through these before we get to the recommendations, some of this may be familiar. Some of the parking signage is either worn out or just hard to see. In particular, some of the, some of these sort of gateway signs that tell people where the off-street parking is are pretty small and, you know, not that obvious. They blend in. So for a town like Situate that has so many out-of-town visitors, it might be a good idea to get some of those, you know, bigger, just P signs to make it really obvious, because if you're going down Front Street at 25 miles an hour, you might completely miss that sign and not know where to park. Also, this no overnight truck parking and Coal Parkway sign is not very visible at all, which may or may not have something to do with our next issue that we observed, which is that there are a lot of commercial vehicles and large trucks parking all day long, multiple days, taking up multiple spaces. So that definitely is using a lot of the available space in that lot, for sure. We also saw a lot of creativity. People parking in sort of the edge spaces. In the Mill Wharf lot, we saw a lot of people sort of parking at the ends of rows, or sort of squeezing in at the front of rows. You know, this is, this is the sort of thing that was just happening when there were just so many people trying to park there, that people were finding space wherever they could. Again, using multiple spaces, definitely an issue. Some of it, you know, is a little bit understandable.
Marty?
That's what Sean's doing.
No, it's not.
Looks like it.
Yeah, so...
She's seen me.
Some of these are, you know, more or less justifiable, but certainly, you know, there's no, there's no reason for some of this to be happening. And then, one thing we see a lot is that when spaces aren't, when the individual spaces aren't painted on the ground, you know, if one person pulls in, they don't know, they sort of park wherever, and then it just ends up, you lose like two or three spaces, because people are just not parked as close as they could be. people are just not parked as close as they could be. And then also some flooding issues, definitely that we saw, which, you know, can pose, you know, people might not want to park in those spaces, so you end up effectively losing some of those spaces. Not to mention in the colder weather, it could become dangerous. So, some of our recommendations. First, just some housekeeping stuff, you know, replace some of these worn-out signs, get some bigger signs for the sort of gateway areas to make sure people know where to go. Restripe the spaces, these spaces right here are across from the coffee corner, coffee shop in, like, right in the entrance of Coal Parkway, but any other places that may have worn-out striping. The Coal Parkway lot definitely needs some new and improved lighting. It definitely got, during our fall data collection, once the sun went down, it got really dark back there. Some of the lights weren't working, and the ones that were, were pretty dim. So, MAPC actually has a great LED streetlight program where we can get, we can help with technical assistance, and we can help with getting better prices and everything. So, that is very highly recommended, and we can follow up with more information on that, too. Also, we saw some of this motorcycle parking in some of these sort of oddly shaped extra pieces of real estate, which is an easy way to sort of get a couple extra spaces, just make that legitimate, use that little piece of space that's already there. And then definitely, a little more enforcement would be good, especially for the long-term storage of some of these commercial vehicles, you know, especially in the peak times of the summer where all those spaces are really needed. You know, if the town, if the town wants to work something out with certain, with certain businesses, that's obviously your prerogative, but, but it was pretty rampant, the number of large trucks that were taking up multiple spaces.
Do you see, from your experience, that some towns have been doing that, as far as like either coordinating off-sections or creating overnight parking for specific uses, whether it's trucks or residents or...
You know, I haven't actually seen any other towns that have the volume of commercial vehicles. You know, we've seen other ones where it's maybe like one or two vehicles in the back corner of a town lot somewhere, but I've never seen this many, as you have here. You know, it could be, you could certainly, you know, push them towards a particular area, such as the southern end of Coal Parkway that's not as heavily used, if you did want to legitimize some of that. But if you do, I would certainly recommend some sort of permitting system so that the enforcement officers can tell which vehicles belong to a business that you've actually sanctioned them to park there, and that it's, people aren't just taking advantage of it.
Because one of the things, I was curious if, and maybe you'll get to it, sorry if I'm jumping ahead.
No, go ahead.
Employees, people who are employed down there who are parking, presumably maybe taking more of the cherry spots, because it's closer for them, but ultimately taking away from the customers or from the, from people who are going down, but, and designating a section for them, but obviously through a permitting process.
Right. So, I will get to that.
Okay, sorry.
So, let me just, I'll, I'll keep going. So, yeah, also the, Patricia, I think, passed out the, the study that the police did on the overnight parking, and there were some, you know, there were a lot of out-of-town people who were there for just a couple nights, but there were definitely some, you know, local vehicles that were there a lot, or people there for longer lengths of time. So, it, it's possible that some of those people are the condo residents or other people who live right near the harbor area, who are kind of taking advantage of that. Just in general, if that, you know, if people are parking overnight for one night, it's probably not having a huge impact on your peak daytime parking capacity, but if someone is just stashing their car there for two weeks in the peak of the summer, that, that is more of a problem. So, just, you know, keeping more tabs on that with the enforcement.
Is Mark, Officer Thompson's here? Was this Mark, your study, or, did you do the study? Question I had on that, that point is, was this like more or less like the Saturday? Did you know, or, your study actually goes longer than just the three days?
There are a number of factors in there, I think condos, but then also people who are going out on their boats.
Boats, what I was thinking of.
There are a number of factors.
So, time limits. One thing we would recommend is just a little bit more consistency on the time limits, making all of the on-street spaces one hour. Currently, most of them are one hour, but there's a couple sections that are unrestricted. So, just to be consistent with that, it's easier for people to understand, it's easier for you to enforce. And then, and then to deal with this issue of employees and boaters, all, all of the boaters, but especially the overnight folks, to have a four-hour limit, and then the other side of that coin is to have an employee permit and to have, and to actually ask boaters to pay for parking. So, for employees, that could be free, it's just something, or you could charge for it, you know, either way, but that would be something where they would come and get a pass from the town, maybe the, maybe the business owner would just get a certain number of passes to hand out to their employees, and that way you could instruct the employees, you know, please park on these further, you know, further south areas that aren't sort of the prime spots. And then for boaters in particular, you know, we certainly saw that was a huge number of the, of the people in the busiest times, work vehicles that were there just all day long, clearly people out on their boats. That's great, but, you know, you want to make sure that, as much as possible, you're sort of pushing them towards the areas where there's a little more space. And then, for the busiest weekends, you know, typically, it's not, it's not the best idea to plan your parking capacity for the busiest of the busiest times. Like, if you are building a mall, you don't want to plan your parking for, you know, the Saturday before Christmas, because then the rest of the year you'll have way too much parking. You want to sort of find some middle ground. So, we wouldn't recommend that you focus on those sort of maybe eight or ten Saturdays that are the very, very busiest, and build more parking to accommodate that. We would recommend that you take advantage of some of these sort of satellite areas that are available, like the lot up on Jericho Road, which had plenty of open spaces, even on the busy summer Saturday.
Is that, I was going to ask, is that the lot between, yeah, the Boat Club and Pier Forty-four?
Right, and then there's another town-owned lot that has the, I think it's, what's the address up there?
I think it's Community Building, which you're talking about.
Yeah, there's the, yeah, so...
The other lot you're talking about is a boat lot, where during the summer, people park their trucks there to drop their boats off and go.
Right.
But the lot next to it is the one that generally is what we call Pier Forty-four. I'm sorry.
No, thank you for clarifying.
Situate Harbor Community Building, um, sorry.
Thank you, yeah. So, there were three that we, that we counted at. There was the, the Public Boat Launch, the Yacht Club, and then the, the Community Building. And the Community Building lot had plenty of space, even at the busiest times. So, for, for example, for boaters that, that might be staying out on their boats all weekend, you know, they, you can require them to park in one of these other satellite lots. If you're, if you're charging for parking, even if it's like, say, ten dollars a day, that you can use that revenue, revenue to have a van or a shuttle of some kind that can take people back and forth to these satellite areas. That way, you're not overburning the, the prime spots with these people who are just leaving their cars there for, you know, days on end. And so, the, for, for boaters in particular, we were thinking, let me see if I want to, okay. So, MAPC has done a procurement, we're wrapping it up this week, for parking payment technologies, and one of the things that we are, that one of the vendors we've selected, two of the vendors we're selecting, does pay-by-phone technology. So, what you could do is have signs everywhere that say, you know, boaters have to, if you're parking for more than four hours, you have to buy a pass, and just call this number or use your smartphone and go to this website, and you can pay for it that way. And then the enforcement officers can have a list of the license plates that have paid, and so they can go and do enforcement that way. You could also have a paper permit that people can purchase, like at the Harbor Master or something, some other convenient location, in order to actually make that work. Couple other things, the Mill Wharf, obviously, it's a privately-owned parking lot, but there's definitely going to need to be some coordination with them in terms of any changes that you make with. The public spaces are only going to be half effective if you can't get the Mill Wharf folks to come along. So, I would encourage, I would encourage them to also have a time limit, and to also have the, you know, a day pass be effective in their lot as well. There are, you know, they could do more of their own enforcement, or the town could reach an agreement with them through some, you know, whatever agreeable terms to do enforcement in the private lot. And then, they should also, you know, they could use a little bit of re-striping and repaving to make things a little bit tidier.
Can I ask you a question? Have you spoken to any of those owners at the Mill Wharf?
We did, so we spoke to a couple...
Not the patrons, but the owners?
Yes. I spoke to one of them while we were out doing data collection, and, you know, and I think it's clear that there's, that parking is like a hot-button topic. But I think, you know, potentially this study could be a way, you know, an opening to approach them and say, look, you know, we, we have some ideas for how to make the whole parking system in the, in the harbor area work better, and we need to work together on this. We do have a couple, I mean, so they, they, I know, have thought about, or, you know, have expressed their desire for the town to acquire additional parking areas, which I will talk about in a second. But regardless of whether or not there's additional parking capacity, it's still necessary to manage what's already there. So, you know, on the summer Saturday, we noticed pretty much half of this parking lot was filled with boaters that were parking there all day.
This parking lot?
Yeah, the Mill Wharf parking lot.
But they might have every right to park there all day.
They might, but in terms of, right, in terms of, you know, in the interest of the business owners, their interest is having their customers be able to easily find parking, you know, convenient to their location. So, it's really sort of, everyone wants the same thing. It's a matter of figuring out how to get there. So, and then, biking is definitely growing in popularity throughout our region. We saw lots of bikers out, especially, I mean, all of the days were nice weather, but there were only a very few number of bike racks. So, putting in some more would, would certainly make it more convenient and would make it more sort of attractive as an option to people. And then, you know, to think about what the town could do in terms of providing some dedicated bike facilities on the streets, because we did see a lot of people riding on the sidewalk. MAPC also does, does bike planning, if that's something the town is interested in the future as well. We've done, we've helped a number of communities do bike and pedestrian network plans to identify which streets, you know, you could put bike lanes and forth. And then, a couple options for increasing capacity, I'm sure you've all thought about these things a million times before, but the, the empty lot behind the gas station, which is the red box, is one that we heard about from a few people, in terms of something the town had thought about in the past, acquiring that lot and, and turning it into a new parking facility. So, that would be, that, that would potentially, you know, help out some of those businesses on the northern side of the harbor area, but it would be, you know, a capital project to make that happen. And then, this, the other lot, which is in the picture on the right, I'm not really familiar with the backstory on this, but that's the one that's directly adjacent to the TK O'Malley's parking lot.
Oh, God.
And I'm not...
Is that private property?
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure there's a backstory on that, but...
Obviously, if it was open, it would alleviate some of the parking situation. It used to be, and due to whatever the private parties ended up deciding or what happened, it's now closed.
Mm-hmm. So, that, you know, potentially, that could be something where the town could lease that space from the private property owner in order to make it public parking, or the, you know, potentially purchase it from the private property owner. We have a lot of other examples. For example, in Natick, the, the town of Natick leases a church parking lot right in the, right in the town center to use as public parking. So, there's precedent for that, and that would potentially, you know, make the land, the landowner, you know, you could address any of their concerns in that type of agreement, but potentially there might be a way to open that up for public use as well. That obviously would be much less capital-intensive, since it's, it could be used as is, pretty much. Then a couple things just for discussion. So, one, I'm sure you've all noticed that on the, sort of the Coal Parkway, like, access street, right by the CBS and the Dunkin' Donuts and the laundromat, there's no parking permitted there, but people do park there all the time. And, you know, that's the sort of thing where people are running in for five minutes, and then they're gone, so it's pretty much impossible to enforce that unless Sergeant Thompson just sits there all day long ticketing people, which I'm sure isn't the best use of his time.
Sergeant.
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant. I'd be captain by eight o'clock.
So, you know, that's a question of if, if we can't really effectively stop people from doing it, is there a way where we can actually just make it legal and make it function better? So, you know, we measured this area, it's not, it would be a little tight to have a parking lane and two driving lanes. So, you know, that's a, that's a possibility. It's pretty much the bare minimum width for that. The other possibility would be, would be to make it one-way, so that people entering from the north can travel on that street, but people entering from the south have to go on the harbor side. So, that's a possibility. And then, another topic...
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah, please do.
In relation to that, recognizing you probably gain four spaces?
Mm-hmm.
If you're to make it one-way, instead of putting spaces directly there, but you're to continue the, the islands to some extent, you'd probably pick up more parking...
Yeah.
Pushing them closer.
Yeah, absolutely. That would take...
That would actually probably increase it eight, maybe even more, is another option, as opposed to putting vehicles directly in front of the buildings, that's all.
Yeah, no, that would, that would definitely increase the spaces more, it would be more of a project to, because there are curbs and grass and trees and things, but, but that would add additional spaces. It might, I'm not sure if it's wide enough for angled parking, but that could potentially be another option, where it would still be, you know, adjacent to that curb in front of the CBS, but it would be angled instead of parallel. I don't remember off the top of my head if it's wide enough for that, but...
You could probably get thirty spots, if you brought the things all the way down to the sidewalk.
You made it all the way down, yeah. Then you'd have to go all the way down around.
Maybe a bike path.
Yeah, there's, no, there's a number of things you could do. And then, another, another thing that we are trying to encourage a lot more around the region is more low-impact development techniques and, and techniques for dealing with stormwater and some of the tidal flooding issues that you have here.
Tidal, especially. That's the...
Yeah.
I'm interested in the pavers, because whether, how the tidal water will impact the greenery of it.
Yeah. Oh, right, so that, so there's a million, this is just one option, there's, you know, this industry of these sort of permeable pavement types and green, you know, vegetative options, has really proliferated in the, in the last few years. So, they, I know I've seen, I've seen ones that can handle, with plantings, that can handle saltwater. They also have ones that don't have any plantings, but are just more, the pavement itself is more permeable. So, these are good options for some of the parts of the parking lot that aren't used as much. Also, they're typically, they can be used in areas where, where there's the, the actual parking spaces, so like the driving lanes might still be regular pavement, but then the parking spaces where there's less wear and tear, because the cars are stationary, could be the permeable pavement types. So, this is another option to think about. Also, for, you know, the parts, the parts of Coal Parkway that are the least used are also the parts that are closest to the water, and so something like this would make the area a little nicer and, and... And so, something like this would make the area a little nicer and, and help extend the feeling of that little strip of, you know, parkland, public space, right along the water. It would sort of feel like that parkland was a little bit more extended. So, that would be, I know that's, that's an issue that's come up in previous, like, the economic development study and some other things about the desire for more parkland. So, that's also something that we can help with for the follow-up. I'm not the expert on, on these types of techniques, but we have, our environment division does have people who are very experienced, so that's something else to think about. And then, so then, just to wrap up, I'm happy to take more questions, but the next steps are that we will be putting together a technical memorandum that will summarize the, in more detail, all of the results of our studies, and then, a little bit more detail as well about some of the recommendations. And then, as I mentioned, if you do decide to go ahead with, with pricing, either, you know, the on-street, I'm not sure if I mentioned this already, the on-street parking is functioning pretty well right now, it's not overcapacity, but if, in the future, it gets busier, you get above that eighty-five percent occupancy level, that's when you want to think about adding meters for the on-street. So, in the future for that, or in the nearer-term future, perhaps, perhaps for the long-term parking people, we have done this procurement and that would enable the town to contract directly with any of the vendors that we select. So, you could, you know, you could implement that pretty much right away if you wanted to. So, yeah, any questions? I know that was a lot to throw at you all at once.
Tony?
I mean, just a, just a quick question.
Yeah.
I, I'm not convinced that you think we need more parking. So, I'm, I'm a little confused as to whether, I mean, I know at peak times we are, but other times we're not, and we're just not using the spaces all over the place, but what's your assessment on, do we need more spaces?
That's a great question. So, I would say, you know, before, before adding more spaces, I would definitely recommend trying to manage better the spaces that are already there. So, with this, you know, with the small exception of that roped-off private lot next to TK O'Malley's, like, if you can open that up, great, that's like another, maybe ten or fifteen spaces in sort of the area where they're needed the most. But in terms of any large capital investment, I would not recommend that right away, because there's, there is a lot more space to be gained by just sort of spreading people out a little more effectively, and potentially clearing out some of the spaces from the commercial vehicles that are taking up a lot of space, clearing out some of the spaces for, you know, the long-term boaters who could be parking at a satellite lot instead. So, I would strongly recommend doing some of those management steps before embarking on any large capital-intensive expansion projects.
And did you go there at night?
We were there through eight PM. So, we caught the, we caught the restaurant peak, there were, sorry, just to go back. You can see, so like, okay, so the summer Saturday, the, the Millworf lot was still pretty high, but the, some of the others were starting to come down or were sort of leveling off. The, the weekday ones, that was the fall, but the, this is the summer weekday, so yeah, the peak was really in the middle of the day for those.
And you, so you, you were there at night? I didn't hear your answer.
Yeah, sorry, we were there through eight PM.
Eight PM.
So, our, our last loop started at seven and finished around eight PM.
Marty?
Yeah, more, more of a comment, actually, Jessica. What happens is, obviously, we get very busy in the summertime, but one of the issues we have, especially in Suchwood Harbor, is TK's might run during most of the year with five or six employees, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
But in the summertime, it'll triple to fifteen, maybe even twenty. So, a lot of those people are parking too. So, it, it's a major issue with employee parking, and along with the barber shop and all the areas down there. So, I mean, I know it's a tough, tough thing, and I've been trying to think this through for well over a year, but how do we do that as far as people who are, you know, paying big rent, really? How do we, how do we help them out by having their employees be able to park there without having to necessarily pay or worry about getting ticketed?
Right, so, so that's why I would recommend having a, let's see, so, having an employee permit system, so you do a blanket four-hour time limit, which means that pretty much any employee is going to be there longer than four hours, so they should be parking with a permit. You don't have to charge for the permits, but then you would just say, you know, "Look, if, for people that are parking with an employee permit, you should be parking further down, you know, along the brook, or just in these more southern ends."
South side, yeah.
Yeah, and that way, you know, the employees are going to be there for six, eight, ten, however many hours, it's fine if they have to walk two minutes from their car. You want to keep those spots right, you know, right in front of the business, you want to keep those spots open for the customers.
I think the business owners know that. They make their employees park further away, especially the people, like, we're talking on the north side, and where there's only limited, limited parking, they tell them.
Right.
Some, some do and some don't, believe it or not.
I like the idea of having a designated space.
You'd be surprised, I watch them, Tony.
Not all of them, but some.
You have to charge them.
Anyone that's paying attention, you know.
Yeah.
It's tough.
So, we also, for the, sorry, I need to go back and forth, for the time limits, if you can see the sort of bright blue sections of Cole Parkway there, we recommend that you make those a two-hour zone. Those are the most popular spaces, and so, you know, because those are the, the people who are going to most of the businesses, those are still pretty close spaces. So, to keep those two-hour, help get some of the employees a little deeper in to the-
Hold that right there. So, you were mentioning people, some of the people on the northern side or further up because-
Oh, they park in these spots.
They park in those spots because they have to walk.
Right.
And so, that's why I say to you, it, it depends.
So, they're not blocking the area, or they're blocking the prime for somebody else.
So, and some could be residents who live in the, you know, the second car to the condominiums, but that's the-
Did you look at reconfiguring that? Like, could we, could we rearrange those spaces in Cole Parkway and get a significant increase in volume?
I think not significant, you could get a small increase, mostly, I think, by extending a number of the rows out a little bit further towards the harbor, which would also help a little bit with traffic calming for people driving around there, because right now it's pretty wide and people can drive fast if they want to, but, you know, you could add a few more spaces onto the end and that would also have a traffic calming effect. But that could be, you know, potentially, there, if, you know, there's six or seven rows, that could be another twenty spaces or something.
One of the things that's always shocked me is, where it's kind of piqued my interest is, you've got the road that goes in next to the buildings, and then you have that road that goes all the way around, and it just seems like that road is so large and there's a lot of wasted pavement there.
Mm-hmm.
And reconfiguring it somehow, I understand some of it can be used for boating right now, and then some of it could be used, you know, for the merchants and employees, but I'm like, just seems like to me, there's a lot of wasted pavement, especially on the, on the bend, the cross-
If you made it all one-way, you could do that.
You might be able to-
Right, so that's the other thing, if you made it, if you made it sort of a one-way loop, then you, then you get a lot more space, you could extend all those rows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts on the sidewalks on Front Street?
They were, they seem pretty good. Are there issues in particular?
About fifteen or twenty-five years ago, they were widened, they used to be on-street parking all along, the whole length. So, I just wondered, I mean, it looks real nice and all that, I just wondered if you talked to the store owner, the, the shop owners, if they thought that that was really necessary.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if they were cut down, Mark, you could have parallel parking the whole length, like we used to in front of Welch's and everything else. And I wrote down angle parking, I didn't think, is angled parking permitted?
Yeah, so we, we usually recommend actually reverse angled parking, I don't know if you've ever seen that, it's not very common in Massachusetts, but Somerville has some and some other places, where it's just safer, because when you're leaving the parking space, you're, the driver is pointed outward, instead of having to back out into the travel lane, you pull out forward.
You back in on an angle?
Yeah, so you pull up and then back in. But, but I think, in terms of Front Street, you know, if you were, if, you know, looking at the, the total number of parking spaces, I think the, the main, you know, the main issue that's happening here, the, the existing on-street spaces are turning over very well, and there's still some open, even at the busiest peak times. So, it's not really an issue, that's not where the crunch is happening, it's more of sort of the overall volume of spaces, and that, that's actually an issue of the long-term people. The people that are, the people that are coming for an hour or two aren't, aren't taking up as many parking spaces per hour, you know, as the people that are staying for, for eight hours. So, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't gain that much by having, you know, going back to the old configuration of having more on-street spaces on Front Street. And I think you do gain a lot by having some of the, you know, some of the, the cafe tables in front of that one shop, and, you know, generally a nicer streetscape. And that's definitely something, that's a, you know, so many towns, cities and towns around our region are trying to go more in that direction, of having a really walkable downtown, where people, you know, just want to come and stroll and window shop.
I just have one more question, I don't really know how much you looked at it, and it's probably more for Mark. Given any thought to the island in front of Maria's sub-shop? You know, an icon in the- Just get rid of it. Do something different to make it so, you know, if Maria's wasn't Maria's, I think they would have been out of business a long time ago.
I would think that would be something, too, that you'd want to look at that entire intersection.
Mm-hmm.
The way that the intersection is offset, pedestrian safety that happens there anyways, Kevin's here and Al's here, that would seem like something that you would want to look at, maybe turning that into an actual T, and then at that time, maybe a lot of change with that configuration.
It's like wasted space across the street, I think that's what John was referring to, it's hard to get in there.
We certainly have pedestrian safety issues with people coming off the crosswalk in any of those areas, we would have situations there where people have been hit before, reconfiguring the way that whole thing goes, but you said it's, it's a lot of history and there's a lot that goes on and then, yeah, right, too, so.
One question, then, I'm going to probably wrap it up with some questions from the audience, but, because we're over, I'm running over fifteen minutes. Did you ever consider, or maybe should we consider, going westerly off Front Street to the, the residential streets? I know, obviously, putting on, even if it's like an hour parking, seasonal parking for, for those streets, to try to increase or improve the businesses, make, possibly make them one-way, I don't know.
Yeah, so you would have to make them one-way, because they're all too narrow, with the exception of Brook Street, they're all too narrow. Brook Street, actually, I, I was going to save this for the report, just because it's getting into the weeds a little bit, but the Hennessy News, like, there's on-street parking further towards Front Street, there's a few striped spaces, but then, in front of Hennessy News, it, there are no striped spaces and the sidewalk kind of disappears. So, it's actually plenty wide enough to have a real sidewalk and real on-street parking spaces and two travel lanes, so that's, that's going to be in the report that we're recommending that you actually-
Designate it.
Put a real curb there and actually stripe a couple spaces. And people do park there, so that's, again, more of sort of a-
People pull right up to the door sometimes.
They pull right up to the door, yeah.
Pretty amazing.
Yeah.
So, now, going forward, then, the report, technical report will be given thirty, forty days, what's the timeframe?
Hopefully, much sooner than that.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully, you'll have a, Patricia will have a draft by the end of the month.
All right, and so, from there, what's the next process for us as a town? I mean, this is a very important issue, that's why I've given a lot of time, because parking has been discussed for a number of years, and that's why we put this together through the MAPC, and because we realize it's important, we want to address it, people are complaining about the overnight parking. We said, wait till the report comes out, once we get it, this year, we're going to make, take some, some action, I presume, that's one of the issues that I'd like to have done by this point, I think the rest of the board feels that way, so, so-
Yeah, so we'll have-
And the pavers, I love the concept of the pavers, I've known that for the past fifteen years. So, I'm like, I think it's something we could look at, it's a money, monetary issue, but I'm intrigued by, I'll be intrigued to read the report, final report.
Great, thanks, yeah, the, we'll break up the recommendations into sort of short-term, medium-term, long-term, like, action items, so hopefully, it'll make it easy to, to take some steps forward. We'll include any other resources that you might need, like, who to contact for more information about the permeable pavers. And then, you know, we'll put in whatever we can to help with funding, obviously, if you do any sort of pricing, like, for, you know-
If we do some work, yeah.
All-day passes, that can be a revenue source that you can use to do some of these other improvements.
One last question, then I'll go to Ms. Burbine. In your experience in looking at parking lots, have you ever seen docks placed in the parking lot?
I knew you were going to go there. She probably hasn't seen them yet.
If you go down there now, I'd love to have that in report.
I knew that was coming.
It is, it is, you know, unusual, we don't see that all the time.
That's overnight parking.
Do we permit them too? You don't have to answer. Ms. Burbine, address.
I chaired the parking study twenty odd years ago, and this was as a result of the reconfiguration of Front Street, to your question, John. There was some loss of eight spaces on both the Front Street and Cole Parkway, eight spaces, that was it. If you look at the movie theater, it's still striped out for bus stop, the bus left a long time ago, and that's a possibility for a few more spaces. In terms of reconfiguring and making one-way through Cole Parkway, increasing the, the green space by the, the-
Gazebo.
The gazebo would make a tremendous amount of sense. There is ample parking, and that was the result of the study twenty odd years ago. The problem is, residents perceive that there is no parking, because they cannot park in front of CBS and zoom in, they don't want to walk. And that, that's, that's an issue. A quarter of a mile is not a long walk, we should give them all Fitbits, so that they can-
Got one right here, my wife gave it to me for Christmas.
I have one.
I wonder why.
So, you know, it's, it's something, it's a dialogue, I, I'm so interested, as you well know, in parking and, and all of that, and it is, the bottom line in all of it is enforcement. And we have the same issue in North Suchwood, it's enforcement. And there are people, there are shop owners who park directly in front of their shops.
Well, we're going to address that, that's the whole point of the, the issue, the issue, we need to give directions for the enforcement, because it's very hard for them to understand, other than overnight, the board needs to give that direction.
I heard this presentation with EDC, excellent presentation, and hopefully, good things will come from it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions?
I just have a question. Have you worked with any communities that are using LPR technology for management and enforcement successfully?
Yeah, so I think-
Derek, can you just explain?
License plate recognition.
Thank you.
So, the idea that you could, basically, there are little devices that are mounted on a cruiser, so as they drive through, it reads a license plate, so you could track to say, a person's been there for five hours, or employee parking, hit again on database, and say, "This person's..." Or go through a beach parking lot and say, "These people have beach sticker permits." So, an officer will be able to simply drive through a parking lot, device reads those license plates, hits a database, and then they can say, "This person's in violation" or "This person isn't." So, we look at a lot of these enforcement things, you know, short of somebody walking around and saying, "My God, this car's been here for how long?"
Plus, that creates problems, because people come running out and say, "I'm moving it right now," and you're like, "Well, wait a minute, you're already twenty minutes over the limit, or you're a half hour at long." Well, I'm coming out right now, and then they're trying to negotiate the, the loss of the ticket and-
But hopefully not, you know, looking at a hundred cars that are in there for an officer to try to figure out, "Is this the car that was here for an hour, or is this the car that was here for five hours?"
So, there are a number, a number of communities that are using that. What I've heard is that they tend to work, they, they work when you're driving through, if you're going slowly, like, if you were trying to do the on-street and go at the speed of traffic, it's not going to work as well, but if you're doing it in a parking lot, it works pretty well. I can put you in touch with some of the other cities and towns that are using it.
All right.
John, can I have one question? What's the follow-up on this? This is great, thank you very much, it's a great study, really informative, and thank you for the police observation this summer. But what's our next step, you know, to do something this and fix it and address it? Does this qualify for CPC?
No, I don't think so.
Not at all to this capital?
I think what, what, what I would like to see the board do is this, get the report, and then we'll have it on another agenda to talk about what's the next step that we want to do. Do we want to put a committee together? I mean, the problem is, we're going to talk about signage, well, that's probably a fairly quick fix, although it'd be nice to get a few people, like Jan, who wants, and, you know, Lieutenant, say, "Okay, these are the optimum, and maybe Kevin or the DPW, optimum locations for signage." That can be dealt with. As far as striping and painting, we could reconsider, you know, I think it'd be better to have a few people take a look at that, maybe if that's the traffic rules, maybe, maybe, I'm not sure. But, I mean, I'd like to do that, and the next thing I'd like to see done is, and I'm sure the board would, if we're going to set up zones or permitting, then that's what we need to do, we need the enforcement- We need the enforcement, and so that people have the signs and they understand that. And I'd like, but I think it's not one of these things that we're going to be able to solve in an hour, two hours, or one meeting. I think probably better suited to set up a small committee and one or two selectmen want to be on it, great. But I, I want to see something done this year, because we've talked about it. I think, is it fair to say everybody else has said that? You know, we talked about this five years ago, Rick Murray and I. Now with this report, I'm like, let's get it done. Does that answer? Definitively, get the report, let's have it on our agenda, and then, um, so probably have it in the agenda after our budgeting. So I'd say March, by the time we finish with all the budgets. Does that work?
That's great. Just, Mark, were you looking for names of communities? Do you want her to get you some that you can talk?
Yeah. I got your email, yeah, we can follow up.
Great.
Jessica, thank you very much. We really appreciate the hard work.
Great presentation, thank you.
Very helpful. Appreciate it. All right, now, we're going to move on to six forty-five. We're running late, folks. I apologize. Fiscal year 2016 capital and operating budget. Oh, thank you very much. Um, thank you. Town administrator, Nancy Holtz, finance director, and, um, that's it, right? Just the two of you, right, folks?
Anyone want a lightsaber?
Fire those down here, Tom.
John, they're sugar-free.
Are they sugar-free?
And they're really good.
Oh, in that case, I'll have one.
This is going to be tricky.
Easy, Sean.
Totally.
Ready, empty the bag?
It's only eight in the van, bud.
He didn't have dinner yet. He didn't have dinner.
Mara wanted, she said, can I have more?
These are good, that's watermelon.
Green is watermelon?
I think so, apple.
Oh, chow apple.
You're right.
I guess so.
My favorite of crystal.
Green? Can Mara have a green one?
I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate this.
Not me.
I don't know who she referred to. It's not me. Just so those people who are tuning in at seven o'clock, we started our meeting at six, given the size of our, um, agenda, and in particular, uh, the budgets and the departments. So, uh, this is the start of it, and so if they're tuning in a little late, that's the reason why. Tricia, Nancy, good evening.
Thank you. So, what I'm going to do with Nancy's assistance is to give you, um, not too long an overview, but not too, too brief an overview of the FY16 operating and capital budget. This is the operating budget, and this is the capital budget. As you can see, they're over probably in total eight hundred pages. It's the biggest thing that our office produces, and, um, we take it very seriously. It has a lot of great information, I think, in it, and, um, if you can't sleep at night, I certainly commend it to you. Um, the budget book's divided into three sections. The first section contains a tremendous amount of financial information as far as revenue and expense projections. We have, um, a lot of prior history now, where we can base our revenue and expense assumptions. The Financial Forecast Committee, um, and the financial team that consists of Steve Jasnibowski, Pam, our treasurer collector, and Nancy, uh, do the projections, and I review them, make a few changes, and then it goes to Financial Forecast, who develop, um, some revenue and expense numbers, and then the budget development process takes place. Before we do the operating budget, the entire capital budget is done. We started that process a little earlier this year to give folks a little extra time for capital, um, and it all gets presented to you, the advisory committee and the capital planning, tonight, and then we roll, everybody rolls for the next two months, capital to advisory of everything that you see tonight. So, um, just as a way of background, the charter requires the town administrator as the chief fiscal officer to present a balanced budget. That's not unique, but it's not common. Um, most towns require the town administrator to present a budget with recommendations. Our charter requires that I present a balanced budget, so it is balanced. One of the challenges for both the capital plan and the operating budget this year is that we are obviously in a little bit of a state of flux with the, uh, debt exclusion questions coming up in January tenth. This budget, both operating and capital, contemplates that, so it's not like we're not aware that it's on our plate, so I just want to make folks aware. And also, I just want to preface my remarks before I get into the overview to sincerely thank all the town department heads and staff. This is a goal-based budget, meaning, uh, staff is evaluated on their ability to achieve those goals. Your goals, my goals, their goals, all, um, provide for a vision for the town, both short-term and long-term, and then we allocate funds. So it's not done in a vacuum, and it's not done without lots of planning and thinking and review. Nancy and I have done our reviews, now it's your turn, and advisory, all the way up to town meeting. Um, I also want to sincerely thank Nancy for her help on the budget this year. This is my sixth budget, her second. Um, it's been the least taxing for me in terms of, um, the attendance stress that's gone, goes with our charter deadlines to get this to you tonight, so I just really want to thank you. And, um, also Pam, who does the extensive debt service stuff that's in the capital plan. Uh, her thumbprint is on that as well. So, let's go to it. I'll go over FY14 recap, where we are in FY15 and what the focal points and challenges are for FY16. We had, again, uh, robust free cash for FY14 certified at 2.7 million. It's a little less than it was in FY13, only about a hundred thousand, but still very healthy for our community. As you know, the free cash funds a lot of the capital plan, so this is money that's made available after all the budgets are closed out at year-end, after we look at local aid, permits, fees, receipts, um, and that's what we have available. That's an undesignated fund balance. Our general fund and new growth, we're up over projections by almost 855,000. We've captured that when we do the projections for FY16, and, um, that budget as well as the budget we're in right now, FY15, continues our investment in capital, roads, technology, foreshore protection, water infrastructure, and our, uh, scheduled replacement of vehicles under the capital. And we were also able to maintain our double-A bond rating. So far, we're just now halfway through FY15. Remember, our budget really is a snapshot in time, because we're presenting it and preparing it nine months in advance of the fiscal year that is actually going to take place July first, and almost two years before the budget we're working on is actually going to end. So, uh, we ask folks to always remember that it's a snapshot in time. As you all know, we're really focusing on building. Our building activity continues to increase, um, and also our local aid and receipts have been above projections. Again, we've captured that in the FY16 budget. New revenue, that wasn't even our revenue stream, the solar, the wind, the mills, has helped our budget tremendously. Again, those weren't revenue sources that existed three years ago, so that's helped us withstand a lot of economic downturns or account for a cushion when other budgetary projections may come in lower than we forecasted. Last year's budget recommendations in FY15 now created, uh, the coastal resource officer position, the property maintenance worker, and the local inspector in the building department to address facilities, building increases, and coastal issues, and we also hired the fax coordinator with the federal grant. All of those, uh, individuals were employed and have already made outstanding contributions, I think, to the town, and, um, in fact, our school resource officer has already received an award from, um, an organization called the Yon Sun Hero Award. So, um, I'm very, very pleased with those additions to the staff, and those folks have more than full-time jobs already. We have a lot going on in this community. I don't think, I know the board and other committee folks are aware of it, but the amount of stuff going on in this community for our size and our staff is tremendous, and we have a lot to be proud of, but we have a lot ahead of us. As we spoke earlier, we have the debt exclusion on January tenth. We completed seven miles of Phase One of the water, and we're looking at Phase Two now for another seven miles, and one of the big projects and capital pushes last year was Wi-Fi in the harbor. Let's talk about, a little bit about our challenges. I'm not going to talk about every single one of these. Some of them are well-known to you. Mrs. Carron's been on the advisory committee for a number of years, so I don't have to go into detail for the board, but, um, we still have challenges in the maintenance of our capital and physical plant. Our OPEB liability continues to increase, and that's a major focus of the FY16 budget. Our human resource needs continue to increase, and exposure to the town in not adequately meeting a lot of our employee relation functions is of a concern to me. Um, our health and insurance and pension benefits continue to grow. Those are fixed costs that we don't have a lot of discretion on. Pension in particular is up, as we projected and predicted last year, over eight percents. Eight percent. With the building comes increased demands on our water, which we're addressing, but also our sewer infrastructure, so we're keeping a line on, on that. Our five-year rolling plan, our capital plan, which we've worked so hard to establish over the last few years, will need to be sustained, and, um, one of the other things is to really try to keep up with the changes in technology. As of any business, public or private, technology is the determinator of success and service delivery. So, when you consider we didn't have an IT function full-time to, I believe, 2010, um, we've done a tremendous amount already, but the demands on meeting customer needs as well as business operational needs continues to increase, and we really need to have that at the forefront of all our planning as we go forward. And since we have so much fixed cost, it's really important to realize that the discretionary piece of this budget is quite small, and that all the demands, in their own way, are very worthy and justify maybe having an allocation of funds, but we can't be all things to all people, so we have to make best judgments about what the best allocation of resources are. That's my job, is part of the charter. It's your job, advisory, and ultimately, town meeting's decision. Um, there's many worthy things in budgets each year that should be funded but can't be funded due to the limited funds we have for discretionary purposes. One of the things that helps us tremendously is we're able to supplement the budget by grants, and today, um, and I'm going to refine this more, I just asked the department for a sampling of, um, grants and awards that we received just in the past eighteen months. You'll note that it's all over two pages, and, um, the town meeting does a really terrific job as far as maximizing opportunities to have sources, other than the taxpayer fund a lot of our initiatives, and, um...
Can we post this on your website, Chris, your town administrator site?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
This is just in the past year?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months. What's the total amount, grants that were awarded?
I can't even begin. I mean, our FEMA applications alone are five million.
I'm always saying that because, you know, a lot of people seem to think that we're not looking for any grants out there, and that, you know, we, we have better things to do.
We do it all the time.
I think this is something that people would be amazed to realize, that, you know, we're searching for every penny we can find to, you know, continue for operations as well as for capital improvement.
Yep.
Just so that people understand, we're looking at a sheet, two pages. One in particular is $2 million FEMA elevation grants. That's huge. Two million. Another one for FEMA Hurricane Sandy, 2.2 million. You know, so that people understand that we're, every department's looking at various
The other thing that's not on the challenges...
Yeah, just what we've had, the parking study was another one, a grant that we got. Sorry, go ahead.
There was actually 6,000 allocated in the FY15 budget for that study that we don't need to use. Um, one of the things that isn't here is one of the challenges particularly is I'm looking at a couple of the enterprise funds. They retained earnings with all the expansion we've done in projects, particularly waterways, need some renewed focus, so that's something we'll be keeping our eye on the next, the rest of this fiscal year. Onto the FY16 operating budget. We have a $72 million budget, all-in, including schools and enterprise, so I can't discuss it all here, so I just want to talk to you a little bit about the focal points. In distributing the budget instructions to all the staff in December about what they could request for budgets, they really asked to hold level fund to their budgets. There's a keen recognition of what's coming down the line in terms of the public facilities, so this budget reflects that in two important ways. We've asked, uh, departments to level their budget, level fund their budgets the most, as much as possible, and that the capital plan was moderated for FY16, because if these projects pass, we want to make sure we're not adding the regular general fund debt that we usually do. We generally add about 1.2 million of general fund debt under borrowing, under our capital plan each year. That FY16 capital plan right now recommends zero, and part of that is because if some of these projects do not pass, we're going to need to regroup in terms of looking at significant capital expenditures for facilities that will be with us for a few more years at the, at the least. So, it does recognize that.
Did you say the capital plan is recommended at zero?
Zero general fund borrowing. It's mostly pay-as-you-go, our enterprise fund. Um, as I noted earlier, our local receipts and new growth are projected to increase. All the backup daters in the first section of the budget for this. We are projecting, uh, level-funded local aid. We do have a brand-new governor being sworn in Thursday. We will probably get an idea of where he's going with local aid at the MMA conference the end of this month, um, but it was, as earlier noted, a new governor, a new administration brings different policies, and so, uh, we have to be mindful of that as well.
Let me interrupt you. So, going back to the other point of level-funded with, um, uh, no, with the, no money being allocated to capital from the general fund, that's assuming that, um, things don't go the way that we, as a board, hope they go on Saturday. If they do go, and if things pass, then we, are you planning on taking a look at capital this year, or just saying no? Level fund it for this year, and then we'll take a look at other, you know, using the general fund to fund the way we have in the past, capital needs? Long and short of it is, if, if it passes, you've got potentially 1.2 million that we've usually allocated for capital.
It would not be my recommendation to add to our borrowing. As you will see later, when we get to the capital slide, we floated a $6.6 million bond, so the debt service budget increased exponentially, uh, because of that. So, um, I, at this point, it is not my recommendation to change. My recommendation, which is no general fund borrowing.
And I, I know, we'll, we'll get into it tonight, but one of the things that certainly we've heard, you've heard, um, is that, and we've implemented, you've implemented, is a five-year capital plan to take a look for maintenance on our current structures. I certainly don't want to have the criticism that now that something passes, now we're not going to put money back into the current buildings that are going to need ongoing maintenance. That is not what we're intending. That's certainly not what you're intending. It's just, given the fact of what's going on right now this year, it's just, um, a...
Again, I want to distinguish between borrowing and pay-as-you-go capital. There's a very, um, I think, healthy capital plan recommended for FY16, but it's done using free cash and capital stabilization allocations and other revenues, not bonding for twenty years to add to the debt that we already have.
Thank you.
Because we, you're right, we do not want to go backwards, as I noted in one of the slides, on the five-year rolling capital plan. We've worked too hard to establish it. So, we talked about the fixed cost, cost increases in the OPEB benefits, and, um, the budget contains considerations for, uh, better handling our human resource functions that you'll get to when you do my part of the budget levy this evening, and it also maintains the commitment to, um, economic development, economic development, as well as for a record fifth year, maintaining allocations for the 2010 override in roads and foreshore protection. That's really important, because when you have an override and you add it to the tax levy, a bit of it erodes every single year. So, it's still not 200,000 that's there from four years ago, and with the net present value dollar discount anyway, so we're still maintaining that, and, um, that's important as I developed this budget, because I had heard in previous years when there were override, what the town had funded in general, operating, sort of disappeared over time because it eroded. So we're really trying to say, you know, these are the things we wanted in 2010, and we're still trying to make a priority commitment that they're addressed, and roads and seawalls was one of them. So this is just a snapshot on some of the typically what you might call budget busters, So this is just a snapshot on some of the typically what you might call budget busters, which are fixed costs. It shows you what the FY15 budget was, what I've recommended, and what that variance is. Employee pension's not a surprise because we expect it to go. You see my recommendations onto OPEB. Our financial policies require 2% of the retirement assessment be added to OPEB. I've been recommending an additional $200,000 to go into that account this year. Our workers' compensation and unemployment have remained level. The other big increase, which we just talked about, is you can see that our debt service under general fund was just under 2.4 million in FY15. We floated that big bond, as I told you, and it's at 6.2 million now. So that's what we don't want to add right now, at least ostensibly, another 1.2 million to. And we maintain steady on self-shore voc. I think, Tony, when financial forecast met, we are anticipating a higher increase because we have an increase in students next year, but that wasn't as much as we anticipated, so we have some pickup there.
Can you help me with the 6.2 million? That's the total bond, that's not the annual expense.
That's the annual expense.
The annual expense is a 6.2...
That's assuming that Saturday's election were to be in a positive manner, you would now have free debt exclusions, so you would have to appropriate...
So we never look at those, I mean, that's not a general fund?
It is a general fund, but it's outside of Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Right. So it's not really a good apples-to-apples comparison.
Your current 2.3 million in the fiscal '15 budget includes your debt exclusions. So it isn't apples-to-apples, it's just that you're going to have some really large fruit coming onboard if Saturday should be in the bottom.
Because when you look at the total town's debt indebtedness, it's blind as to what's excluded or not debt-excluded. So it's our total ability to bond.
You know, for the last 13 years is, we look at general fund debt as all the things that we do through capital planning and every debt exclusion thing on top of that. So it'd be interesting to see what is just...
That's still broken out. You're absolutely correct. For purposes of that slide, it just shows we are...
So you're going from about 1.5 million to 1.5 million between fiscal '15 and fiscal '16, exclusive of the debt exclusions.
So that's level funded?
The exclusions in one sense.
But again, we have to keep our total debt load in perspective, the 22 million in the water, as we're doing 7 million, you know, whatever. So fortunately, when we started three years ago, we had very nominal debt, but we also have to be careful that, you know, we're doing it at an appreciable rate that's not going to bind the town later, 15 years from now, when we need other things because we have such high debt. Even though some's coming off, we'll be, you know, adding that 1.2 each year or whatever, you know, out to maintain our operating and maintenance of what we have already. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the initiatives on this budget that's being recommended to you tonight. It focuses again on economic development, transportation initiatives to the harbor with the replacement of the MBTA train on the weekends. And we just heard one of the MAPC recommendations about parking. There's a separate MAPC recommendation on economic development that will be coming back to you. As I said, it maintains our commitment to facilities and infrastructure. It commits to foreshore protection improvements with the execution of easements and public access for seawall repairs on private property. There's a detailed chart in the budget message in the first section of the budget book, and I think this sometimes gets lost in the translation, that this town has $7.7 million committed to foreshore protection since 2010. $7.7 million. And again, through the work of Mr. Cafferty and Mr. Banker before them, I think we have a program to identify where seawalls can be repaired, and we will repair seawalls on private property if the owners give us an easement and beach access. And that's something we're really going to be focusing on in the next year and, in fact, are now. We expect the level of work to increase with the FACS coordinator and to deal with the issues of drug use in our community that the police department has already made great strides in, and also our coastal resource officer, who's applied for many of the grants that you see on that list already, and will be talking to you about another one at your January 20 meeting, as well as the school resource officer and the manager of social services in the council and aging. New positions that are really, I think, have proven their merit in terms of service to the community across all ages and populations. We talked about the water and the next phase of the sewer that's on your plate for next year. We're automating as many functions as possible, so we expect to implement the financial software system that the capital plan improved this year. So all employee payroll and time will be automated, so we'll get rid of all those manual processes. And those are the highlights for the FY16 budget. So the operating budget for the fifth year has $200,000 for roads in addition to the money that we get for Chapter 90. It also includes 200,000 in the operating budget for foreshore protection and another $200,000 in the capital plan. That's another $400,000 alone for foreshore protection recommended in FY16. We do have a citizens petition article for $2 million for this town meeting. That's something that the board will need to address later on when the petitioners come in, but there is 400,000 recommended in this budget. Two new things in this budget that I want to call particular attention to is that we have been working on and expect to implement in May, a police marine unit in the harbor. This is something that the chief of police and I have been discussing for the last few years, the former chief and the current chief, along with the appointment of a new harbor master. There will be a police boat in the water from May to October. There will be a new harbor master hired that has police powers. That's a new change for the town, as the board's aware of, and something that we'll be implementing in FY16, and funds have been provided for that. In recognition of the fact that we're asking our taxpayers for a lot in the next few months, and they have already approved a library and some other things, because of the tremendous turnaround that the transfer station has seen in the last four years, that was something that was in the red and actually running as a deficit prior to 2009, that enterprise fund, I'm comfortable enough recommending that we're actually going to be able to reduce the transfer station sticker fee by $10 in FY16. Not a lot of money, but some relief to folks recognizing that there's a lot that we're asking in terms of infrastructure improvements. And the more we recycle, the more we save, so we're going to have to tie that with a renewed focus on getting folks to recycling. We have a pretty good rate this year, but I think the town has merited a reduction looking at the projections and the revenue and the way we're operating that budget. So it's a little something, sort of not frosting on the cake, but maybe some jimmies. So... And then also the budget includes bringing Wi-Fi to the senior center. Our new senior center director noted that they could do much more with their computer labs and training some of the seniors down on Brook Street if they had Wi-Fi, so we're going to do that.
Tricia, just a quick question. So on the police marine unit, which is going to be separate, is that officer going to be a full-time officer year-round, though? Will they be doing something different?
Yes, they will. There are police officers that will be an added shift that will work exclusively in the harbor. And the supervisory oversight will come from the chief of police from May and October, from the harbor master. It will shift from me to the chief of police.
Okay. Thank you.
We have 33 warrant articles, up seven from last year, and right now they include five zoning amendments and two petition articles along with the, as I call, usual suspects. And that doesn't include, that does include the special right now. You're opening the warrant for that tonight, but that's what we have right now. December 16th was the deadline for you to receive all those requests. I'm going to talk really briefly about the capital plan, and then Nancy can answer any specifics you have. Over 13 million in FY16 capital requests. Remember, since we have a five-year rolling, what wasn't funded in FY15 automatically gets added to FY16. So this is in 13 million in new requests. This is just what our rolling capital sort of adds to each year. And as you can see, 1.2 is recommended for the general fund with zero borrowing, and that's coming out of free cash. And again, having 2.7 in free cash may seem like a lot of money, but we would have no capital plan the last few years if we weren't able to use that free cash to replace trucks and school security and school technology and some other upgrades to like heating and roofs. So it is an important part of our budget. Again, it moderates the borrowing in recognition of the public facilities master plan, makes allocations for school and town needs, and recommends continuing appropriations to capital stabilization fund. One of the great things about creating that fund is that if we can allocate money into it over a number of years, then when the bill comes due for something, we don't start in for scratch. The ladder truck was an example of that this year. Two come to mind. One is, we need to buy another new ambulance. $265,000 is a new ambulance. On average, we need to buy one every five years. So we're allocating some money into capital stabilization for that. The turf field at the high school needs to be replaced. That's been on the five-year rolling capital plan. It's going to need to be replaced in the next three or four years. We're recommending allocation into the stabilization fund to begin to offset the cost of that. So again, planning both short-term and long-term so the town doesn't get jammed up like it did eight or nine years ago with not having enough operating capital for the operating budget and, as a result, having no capital plan whatsoever. Here are just, and this is the last slide, our continuing obligations for FY17 and beyond. Again, we're not doing the budget just in a one-year timeframe, even though that's what you're reviewing. Our pension is going to continue to increase at least at 8% per year as per the county because they extended the funding schedule, so that's a known cost we have already. We still have foreshore protection commitments in terms of the FEMA reimbursements, and the OPEB is one of the budget priorities this year to begin to address that. And we really need to focus and talk about that in terms of the town's bond rating as we look at these projects because that is probably, I don't know, 70% of the thing, the reason why the town may not achieve a AAA bond rating. So, and we'll talk about that as we get into the weeds of the budget later. This is just an overview, but something that Nancy and I talked about quite a bit when we developed the capital budget and the operating budget. And also to recognition that there are no surprises that if we build all these buildings, their square footage, their utilities, their needs are going to increase. We don't want to be caught flat-footed, so again, this budget's moderated so that when those increases come, if these projects are built, we have some flexibility in the budget to do that. So we haven't absolutely spent every cent that we have because we want to make sure that we'll need that extra flexibility in two or three years if all or some of these projects come to fruition. And that is it. I'm happy to answer any questions, but that should just give you a general flavor as you get into each of the budgets. And Nancy and I are happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
I just want to say thank you. It's a great document, yeah, just to comment. If everyone could just really understand the depth of work that you and your team put into this, so the beginning of our reading for the next couple of months.
And the first section of the budget will go up on the website probably next week, both the capital budget message and the operating budget message.
I do have one request, Mr. Chairman. Just, you probably know, just from history and past and working on the advisory board, what helps me is to see departmental changes, just one spreadsheet, which we have, but the percentage and change, so I can just see where you're proposing the different moves. So if we could get that column added to a sheet just as backup, that would be great, Nancy.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's good observation. Agreed. Usually you go through it and you're like, okay, where's the change? And we have to go find it, and I find the bottom number, and then I go back, so.
The other thing that pops up, and there may not be any, but if there's any new personnel on the budget, you know, are there any new positions we're trying to create as we have in the past years? That's always good to...
There's just one, and it's not a full, it's a .7, .8 HR specialist.
30 out of 35.
Yeah, it's a 30-hour position in the accounting for a human resource specialist. And you have information in the budget about that. It's in under accounting and in the budget message. It's called out.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that starts off the very first item. It's quarter vape. We have Kevin and John. Chief, here first. Chief Murphy, Fire Department. Good evening, and welcome. Let's see. That should be... 220?
220.
220. It is 220. Chief, good evening.
Good evening.
This is the first time you're doing it, actually, right?
It is.
So I know this is, you're just getting into the budget and taking a look at it. Are there any goals that you'd like to see? Obviously, we'll find out if it's on Saturday.
That is a big indicator. That's probably our primary goal. That's going to assist us with a lot of our challenges we have within the Fire Department. Probably half of them. I did a SWOT analysis for the town administrator on a five-year strategic plan, just going down the list of challenges that, obviously complex, we'll need half of them. So it's imperative to us to make that, you know, hopefully that happens on Saturday, but if it doesn't, we have to deal with what we have and adjust and move on.
So just that we have here, the budget that was appropriated in FY15 this current year was about $4.3 million, and the request for this year was 4.4, and what's been recommended by the town administrator is a 4.5. So basically, it's $4,583,000.
Right. Most of that is contractual. It's personnel?
Yep.
So I guess the big, the big number here is the difference in the overtime between what we budgeted last year and what we're, what the town administrator recommended.
Excuse me, Tony. That, 100,000 of that is allocated for potential second ambulance hiring by daytime, which is a peak demand, 10 hours a day overtime to fill that shift to run a second ambulance full-time. So 100,000 of that, close to that is part of that overtime.
So out of the 678, 100 is that, is what you just said?
Yes, correct.
And that'll generate revenue to offset some of it, some portion of it?
It will generate some revenue. It's about $670 per ambulance from the average, between full ALS runs could be as high as 1,500, down to Medicaid, which could be 500. We've been averaging about 325 mutual aid incoming ambulance calls, giving out 140. If we could capture half of them, it would probably make up close to that 100,000. You know, there's some other costs in fuel and stuff, but we are paying the guys. We do have the ambulance there, so, but it's all about the service.
I was going to say it's more important.
The service of the town is the most important thing, but there is some gain in revenue to offset that overtime cost.
But there's also a dependency on us settling the fire contract for some of it.
Right.
Because it's a change in hours.
Those are the contractual issues you were raising earlier on.
And that's still...
Still pending.
Pending.
All right. Questions from the board? Anybody?
No.
So the overtime still goes up about 25 grand outside of that?
Yeah, 23,000, I think I estimated, yeah, Tony.
So this is, for all intents and purposes, a level-funded budget because it doesn't reflect any COLIS or any additional roll-ups because there is no contract in this department. When you review my budget under Labor Council and contract bargaining, there's allocations for if and when the contract is settled, but it's not reflected in this budget. So this is just step increases, educational incentives, and overtime that are driving the increase.
And there's no new positions? There'll be one filled, right?
There's actually, well, we hired three, and they just started actually this week. So they're actually taking place of, there's four vacancies. We had two prior. We had two starting in the fall with the chief judge and Lieutenant Dolan retiring. So we filled three of those, starting last, four catchings ahead of time. The town administrator hired three back in, now, we started the process in June. It takes a couple of months for them to go through their physical agility test, all the interviews, everything, the assessments, and they started, they were ready to go in August, but it took us six months to get an academy spot. So they're starting January 20th in two weeks. They have two weeks in-house training. They'll start the academy in two weeks. They'll graduate March 20th. I see probably two of them, two of them getting on shift right away, another one maybe getting another month's experience on the ambulance before she starts on shift. But pretty soon we'll have three available. We have one vacancy right now, looking at hiring another firefighter. We do have one firefighter that's probably not coming back due to disability. He's still seeing specialists, going to doctors, but I don't foresee him coming back. So we have one vacancy now, potentially two soon.
So in the budget, there's three, which you said two of them are filled, and then there's the one other one, and then there'll be, somebody will move up, right, to...
Yeah, we have offices. We just had assessments for deputy chief and captain about just before the holidays.
That may be another...
So there'll be promotions within, and then there'll be lieutenants, probably a And then there'll be lieutenants, probably assessment in some time, probably the next month or so, I would assume. And then we're looking at also one, potentially two firefighters, depending on what happens with the disability. We may know soon how that's going to go.
But are they new slots or these are just vacancies from prior?
These are vacancies. These are vacancies strictly from retirement. One transfer and three retirements.
So, somebody asked me the other day, how many firefighters you have and?
You may have been with me. We guessed 60, I think.
54.
Oh, I did.
I swear I did. I said 54. I hadn't even looked at the numbers. I just know because the police have 35, I think, so.
You said 80.
Um, I didn't.
Anyways, it is 54.
The total in-house right now is 52.
52, okay. I'm off by two.
Yeah. So, that's good.
But we have 54 as a total number, as positions, so.
Because two haven't been filled.
They haven't been filled, yeah.
So, we're in flux right now because the chief was a deputy and there's no deputy and when there's a deputy, there'll be a vacancy for, so it's just a constant.
Right.
And if somebody retires or this gentleman goes out on disability, but it's funded, they're funded.
So, the point is there's no new funded positions.
No, right.
Same as last year, that's just.
That's correct.
It just takes such a long time to get somebody through the process.
Does, it's about nine months. By the time you get, you get to the list, you get people to come back. We had to go to the list three times to get people because we started residency. We didn't have enough because we were hiring three. We went out twice for civil service, two additional. So, it took about a month just to get the people in and sign. And then we started the interview process and then they have to do the physical agility test. So, they have to run through some hoops before they can sit down and sign the paperwork. That was two months. So, once, we can't give the names to the academy until they are hired, basically committed to hire them. We put the names in. They were scheduled on February 9th. They did get moved up three weeks to January 20th. The Fire Academy, we can't control, but they are building a satellite campus in Springfield. Supposed to be done this spring. It should alleviate a lot of the stress, hopefully getting that six months down to three months probably next year. So, that should help a lot. We are looking at alternative places. Sometimes Brockton has academies, Quincy. We've had guys in Boston before, but, so we're looking at all options, but, you know, Stowe has been, probably 90% of our guys have gone through Stowe, and girls.
Tough commute.
It's a long commute, but it's a great academy and it's equivalent, they say, to five years' experience. And right now, it's, you wanted to go through this, they're so confident when they come out of this, fire is fire. The EMS, most of these now have been, two of our paramedics right now are hiring, they've been working on the ambulance for two years now. Nicole's been working for six months as a BLS, getting training, doing everything that she takes, you know, all the, all the extra efforts to try to get trained. We brought her in three weeks early just to get some ambulance time during the day. So, I assume she'll probably have about six weeks daytime before she's on the ambulance, you know, see how she goes, but I'm assuming by May 1st, she'll be on the shift. The other guy will be April 1st.
So, just in totality, last year's budget was 4.33 and this year's is 4.58. And like you said, that includes the 100,000 dollars for getting the second ambulance.
Correct. It's about 155, 155, 61 aside from that 100 is the increase and it's just about all salaries and commitments to.
But no COLIS.
Right.
That's our second biggest budget, I think, isn't it?
It's your biggest, largest.
Other than the school.
You're right.
Right, on the town side.
Great. Any other questions? Questions from the audience?
I have a couple. John, thanks. Just a couple. Could you just explain to us a little bit, I don't know, I know you've just, this is your first budgetary process, but the AFG grant that we were denied in FY13, but you've submitted for it.
Yes.
Do you have any information as to, because you have a number of grants here that you also submit for, so thank you very much for your department doing that.
Yes.
Do you have any idea what the value of that grant is and what it is?
Sure. That's the Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
Okay.
That the Bush administration pushed through. It's basically to assist, we, you know, some towns get ladder trucks, some towns, what we're putting a grant is right now, we just put a current grant in about six weeks ago. It's for additional portable radios. We're going from a VHF radio system to a UHF system. The town's quoted that with $283,000 to get the infrastructure of that going. We probably have about 25,000 to 30,000 dollars left over for portables. Portables can go from anywhere from 1,500 to 7,000 dollars. So, the ones we're looking at, they want to be, we're trying to go, it's called P25 compliant. They have to be intrinsic. You can use them in atmospheres that are sort of dangerous with gas, whatever, and they're all so digital capable, so there's some, some levels they have to reach to be able to try to get them on today's apparatus, what they're actually qualified for firefighting. And we're looking at that grant to provide 151,000 dollars to try to get 46 portables. You know, get, maybe have the whole personnel have their own portables, all on the trucks, but the trucks first, so. That was our biggest need right now. And when they give these grants out, they look what you're not in compliance of. It's not what you really want, but what are we not in compliance of right now? So, right now, we're not in compliance with the UHF system. We do have the infrastructure, but not the funding for all, everything we need as far as portables. So, that should grade fairly high. We've actually consulted with some of the people from MEMA in FEMA and they said that would be a strong case for a grant. So, that's the biggest funding grant. We have gotten several, the SAFE grants for the, for the schools, for going to the schools. Now, there's actually a grant, they're including, almost doubling that for senior safety because children were the most vulnerable for fires for the longest time. 19 years ago, the SAFE program started after the three children died on Hadley Road. That fire initiated this, I met the gentleman who started it. It was after that fire. So, that fire, you know, something positive out of that. Looking to now, the last couple of years, less than two kids a year die from fire. At that time, it was 23. So, it's been a huge benefit because these kids carry it on till they get older, they remember this, but now we're reaching out to the seniors. They're now the most vulnerable in fires. We want to, we're trying to do an outreach program to, we're doing a current sign-up for seniors that can't afford or don't know how to put up or can't put up smoke detectors. So, we're trying to reach out to the sign-up sheet. We're meeting all the, all the senior complexes starting tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday to do this education, this outreach. But we are doing sign-ups for getting some guys out there to install these, install these smoke detectors, common oxide detectors. So, it's a great program. We've gotten it every year. We just actually got a check deposited last week. We just notified about a month ago, 8,018. Just, I just got the notice, a good deposit to the town account just past January 2nd. So, CERT is Citizens Emergency Response Team, local people trying to help when we get big stuff going on, storms and stuff like that. We've gotten that each year. The MPG grant is Emergency Management Performance Grant. We just got a grant just past November for 8,435 dollars there. So, again, some radio stuff, infrastructure that we need that we don't, really can't afford out of a regular budget. We have an E911 program, an EMD, Emergency Medical Dispatch. We heard about a lot, a lot of that during the public safety presentations. The dispatch is having to do multi-function. Now, they actually have to give instructions by a flip chart to the person on the phone for care, whether it's a heart attack, a stroke, or whatever it is, to try to guide them through the first steps they should be taking to try to, to try to help save this spouse, family member, whatever it is. And that training is mandated, but it's subsidized by the state. We got 59,000 dollars this year. This is a 16-hour course, there's several components to that. We estimate the firefighters that have taken part in that will probably utilize about 40,000 of it. So, you know, our grants, we've been aggressive. We did apply for a boat grant also through the poor security. We did not receive that, but that's something we can look at, at options also in the future with a boat we have, maybe engines or a boat down the road. So, we're looking at all options. Any grants that come across the table, we're going to go for them.
Great.
Any other questions?
Nope.
John, that's great. Just so people understand, we're not voting on this. We'll vote at the very end, probably in February, not probably in February at our last meeting on the budget, but appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And hope to have good news come Monday from Saturday.
Sounds like it. Yes, thanks for your help.
Thank you for all your help, John. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item, which is the facilities. Kevin Kelly, our finance, facilities director. Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening.
What number?
410.
410. All right. Kevin, what are the goals that you have for this coming year? What are the goals that you've, you've looked at for this past year and then the goals that you're looking for going forward?
The ones going forward, because I have those right in front of me, those hinge also on, a lot on the vote this coming week. Hopefully, we'll be working on some new buildings and getting those things designed and built and the plans getting on those and my involvement in those. And then also, one of my goals is if we don't have a positive vote, then we will be working on developing future use plans for our existing buildings that will not be changing in use and developing with the user groups for those buildings, a capital plan and a needs assessment plan for those buildings. And then another large goal of mine is we began work on a building profile book for the entire town and that's populated now with all information for each building, for its location, for its size, for the particulars of the building, the needs, the, and now we need to more populate it with each department head and each group for their actual capital needs moving forward and getting more concrete information in there for what's needed to create, create an active building profile that we can work off of.
So, Kevin, that has every one, every public building in town in that one?
Yes, this has 59 tabs in it.
Wow.
Which has each building in town and it has the base information in it now.
Good, all right. So, that's you, that's a goal to have completed for the next year?
Yes.
So, we have a complete book on all the public buildings.
That was something the Public Facilities Master Plan had recommended. So, we already had the building blocks. It was something I tasked Kevin with when he started, but as he just said, we want to have an individual capital plan for every single building.
Good. So, now the budget. Looks like the total budget that was expended last year was 480, I'm sorry, 458,000. This year, you requested 475,000 and the town administrator's recommended an increase of 500, I'm sorry, not an increase, but it recommended 545,000. That's an increase of about 65,000.
70,000, 65, 70,000. Some of that money, some of the 65, 70,000 is in the building materials and supplies to help support our new facilities maintenance worker and the work that he will be doing and improving the services we provide for each building and fixing things ourselves and getting things done. And then a large chunk of that, the remainder of that money is in the public buildings line.
That's 62 grand. What is that exactly? Is that, is that materials or supplies or?
No, the, the public buildings line is not for materials and supplies. That's populated up above in the separate line items for materials and supplies and building materials, building supplies. The 62,000 for the public buildings increase is for larger ticket items that need to be repaired and taken care of. At the fire headquarters, we have a building envelope problem with water penetrating in the front of the building and dispatch. Actually, we're dealing with that problem now, but as part of that, we found the whole building needs to be, there's a lot of surface cracks, structure cracks, a lot of ceiling, those types of things that need to be waterproofing. And then there's money set aside for public safety, communication and connections, working with the public safety building for improvements in that. Excuse me.
So, these are all things that are under 25 grand, is that?
Yes.
Kevin, can I chime in? Kevin and I worked on this line item together. We have the highway department building improvements for 15,000 to 20,000. All of these are under 25,000, so they don't rise to the level of a capital project, but they are improvements to a capital building for the most part. Widow's Walk HVAC repairs for about 15,000, 17,000. Kevin already spoke to the fire HQ repair building envelope room, please.
Well, that would go under the enterprise fund, wouldn't it?
It depends. Right now, we're having it under here because the fire would deal with Kevin. Widow's Walk doesn't have any extra funds to deal with their capital needs right now. So, if they do have a major capital failure or if they're going to have an imminent capital failure, the general fund is going to have to step in and address that. We also have a water treatment building repairs there. Like I said, it can be taken care of with water enterprise funds. If it's something that we can go to a town meeting with, if we have an imminent failure and Kevin has to step in, we need to be budget for that. And then we have approximately 15,000 dollars left over that we appropriated for other building repairs that come up that may not be known or may not fall under the level of such as an insurance claim. We've had several larger building repairs this year because there have been insurance claims, but that's not always the case. If you first apply, it may or may not be an insurance claim and we would have to deal with that and we need to have funds set aside to be able to address that. There's also funds in this line for building repairs due to deferred or current maintenance that doesn't rise to the level of a capital project. So, if there was something that, now that we have a facilities property maintenance worker that can go over and do some of these repairs and so we don't have to have a capital project or we can cut one off because we've actually been proactive in our deferred maintenance, that's something that Kevin is working through currently with Dave, the property maintenance worker and going through a punch list of all the things that can be addressed that he can do himself or things that if they need to be sent out or a smaller contract to do, something that would be, you know, some of the trades they've, the property maintenance worker can't do, but he can do a lot of the things and it's significantly helpful to Kevin. I think Kevin would agree.
Oh, yes.
But there was 96 in it for last year, so this is all incremental? You're talking about incremental stuff?
We're talking about what makes up this request. So, these are some of the projects that are in this line item that we're foreseeing that Kevin's going to have to deal with, but keep in mind, there are a significant number of buildings that Kevin's in charge of that have significant deferred maintenance on them that anything could happen. And he also spoke to the 75,000 dollars that we are setting aside in this line and if public safety buildings should come to fruition, there are utility connections and communications that would need to be done at that occasion. They're not part of the actual capital project. They're separate apart that the general fund has to address and that would be out of the facilities budget that they would be addressed.
Questions?
Yeah, I just have, I have a question on just up to salaries for a second. I'm trying to, I'm trying to calculate this out. So, FY15 appropriation, 205, 433 and 16 is 221, 837, difference of about 16,000 and change. I see part of it, I think, but, I mean, I know that we hired somebody, but the numbers aren't adding up. I'm just trying to see what the difference is there.
There will be one second. Bring it up.
Okay. I mean, because we hired a cop and a handyman, but one, I don't remember, and again, it's what Maury was saying, is really, would make it a lot easier. But it's a difference that, you know, we've got a salary of 42,000 plus. I just, I'm just trying to see where the numbers are. It's not adding up.
We also have the reservationist.
I saw that. That's new as well, right?
No, that was there last year because we do have reservations at Central Harbor Community Building that comes from this budget. And we have the two custodians in there overtime, but we will have our maintenance worker for a full year this time.
Oh, okay.
He wasn't hired until halfway through the year.
So, that's the difference. Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Other question?
Nope, I just think it's great to point out with all the scuttlebutt out there that we have Kevin as a facility manager and a nice staff and we're starting to take some nice proactive steps to maintaining the buildings. So, thank you.
Well, thank you.
All that work in that booklet and identifying everything that we need to address that's been ignored for so long.
Yeah, thank you for the approval of the addition of the property maintenance worker because that has been a, you know, we're going around and doing a lot of small things that we've been unable to get to because we just can't find people to do it and it costs too much to do it. And it's just been wonderful.
A person like that can pay for himself and then some.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's what he's doing. It's hands-on himself doing it. He's not contracting out anybody.
Oh, no, no. He's doing a lot of stuff and it's a lot of neat stuff that we've had on a wish list that, you know, people don't even know we're doing. Case in point is those pipes have been driving me nuts for two years.
Do it fix this week?
Dave made a little box to cover the MIP, so it looks a lot better. The box sticks out a little bit, it looks better than the pipes.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, and thank you for doing a collaborative procurement strategy, too.
Okay.
Let me now save us money as well. Interested in who you're collaborating with at some point, but...
Quincy School System started that.
Okay.
The facilities people over there. And they have, I think 11 communities are involved in that.
So you're jumping in on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we're jumping in with them.
Awesome. Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Nancy, can we just get a list of that item, that line we were talking about?
Absolutely.
Because you rattled off a lot, like, my memory's...
I couldn't find it. I seen that before. I was saying...
On with the hearing. So we're going to move on to the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator budget item. I think Sheila, are you presenting it? So we're going to do Sheila's portion.
The 149, right?
And then what we're going to do is we'll take a break after that, okay? So why don't we get to...Sheila, why don't you come on in? Come on down.
Thank you.
Yeah, I figured to get Sheila in and out of here. Thank you, Sheila.
You're welcome.
All right. Likewise, some of the goals that we've tried to accomplish past year, but more importantly, what are we looking at for this year?
Well, mine are more or less ongoing, but this year I was hoping to develop an office procedure manual, just to develop a guideline of what I do, when I do it. And also, I'd like to develop a little bit more information on the senior tax workoff program.
Good.
Have more of a, maybe do a little brochure that explains it and the parameters and, you know. Those are two that I have and I hope that I can accomplish them.
What budget are we looking at?
149.
149.
But you're not even in that budget.
No, just talking about the budget right now. So for the town administration, what was appropriated last year was about $103,000. The request is for $106,873. And town administrator's recommending $121,873. So it's an increase of...
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, give or take.
Fifteen some.
And it looks like the difference comes into training.
Telephone.
And telephone. Telephone's straight requested. It looks like the, well, telephone. It's kind of 10,000, yeah.
Why is that?
Well, that, that's for all of the phones in the entire town hall. And actually, Bill, our IT director, is, has requested that we go up a bit on it for...he expects to have a little bit of an increase in the phones.
Do we use Verizon or Comcast?
Verizon.
We do, yes.
Probably because we're going to have to travel down to Kingston to talk to them now that they're out of progress.
I know.
Questions from the board?
The phone's going to go up 33%?
That's a big bump in phones.
Or is there some other component? Maybe he knows. We can ask him when he comes in.
There is another component.
Maybe it's...
It's, yeah, it's cell phones and we have staff using cell phones. We have new staff. We have three new staff, Bob Vogel, the Coastal Research...
So this includes landlines and cells?
So it's, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's all in. So it's for this building in terms of the landline, like Maury said, and then cell phones for staff.
Yeah, but it's incremental. I mean, we had cell phones last year. We had telephones in the building last year, right?
And each new cellphone is $1,000 a year.
Really?
Wow.
And we have three new staff.
Can we get the family plan?
Well, that along, that's kind of what I was going to ask. Does the town get a much better bang for their buck than we do individually when we go out and get one?
Yes, we do.
Good.
This phone itself is actually free. And then we get a government discount from what you pay.
See, I know nothing about that. That's good. And there's additional training, I guess? Is that...
Yes. That's support staff training.
Right. So that line item was part of the override and it's in two places, in 123 budget and 149. The training budget for all the professional support staff is out of my office. So that when we appoint a new fire chief and a new chief of police, a new lieutenant, a new assistant to the Board of Selectmen, that money all goes to train those people.
Okay.
And there was never an existing budget at all. So there's training money in the individual budgets, but then for specialized training that the town never took advantage of before, like to send a fire command officer to the NFPA in Maryland when they're promoted, new sergeants to go to the Municipal Police Institute. That's what that, this is used for. We have a new fire chief, a new chief of police, two new lieutenants in the police. We'll have new sergeants. We'll have a new deputy fire chief, two new lieutenants. So that's why that's been bumped up for training for them.
And our local inspector, too.
And our local inspector, right.
They're helpful. I know that's one of the things I think we identified four or five years ago. And I know recently Chief Judge had mentioned about his training he had, I think it was in Colorado.
Yep.
And he had a really good experience, so...
And that's not something that traditionally staff sought out because it costs $1,500 to go to the type of training John mentioned. So, so that, and because we have such changes in supervisory staff and other department heads, too, that that's what...
And there was zero. Other questions?
No. I guess I'm outside.
Sheila, I think that's it, right? You don't have anything else before, right? You're not covering the insurance or workers' comp or reserve fund, advisory disability? Do you want to?
No, thank you.
She does all the paperwork for those. And I just want to thank, Sheila puts together your budget book, all those tabs and everything.
Sheila, thank you.
Sheila, this is awesome. And I want to personally thank you for the large fonts on the tabs.
But it also, as you'll see in my budget, may be Sheila's last budget book. So before you break, I just want to, we're working hard on trying to keep her, but she's anticipating retiring, although after she did the budget book, she's like, I can't wait. But I don't know what I'm going to do. I'm just bereft.
Oh, she'll be fine.
So maybe she'll be here next year.
Sheila, thank you.
Maybe I can work in the senior tax workoff program.
Can't go till then.
All right.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thanks, Sheila.
All right, folks. What I'm going to do now is we're going to take a break, about five minutes. Actually, let's make it 10 minutes, 8:30. We'll... ...budget items and then we'll go to the new business, all right? Thank you. All right. Welcome back, folks. Let's move on to departmental goals and budget reviews for, what's the number, 192? Insurance, general and unemployment. Krista, that's you, right?
Yes, so after we do the others, we can do 123, too.
Goal is to limit the claims.
So that's insurance, the general liability insurance. And it tells you all the lines that we carry. We're carrying a 10% increase in the budget this year. We've had a lot of claims losses this year, so we expect the budget to go up significantly. We lost, and Nancy, you can be specific for them about a couple of the losses.
Yeah, the claims that I'm aware of right now total $187,000. And the highlights are $42,000 for the town ear damage, $10,000 for the police prison that was wiped out with a wave. That's not the only police prison damage we have, it's just the one I know about. An estimate for the Gates School damage of $50,000, Chain Pond Pump Station at $42,000, and Cushing School at $35,000.
What's the Cushing, what's...
This is someone I'm aware of.
What's the Cushing School damage?
I don't know what it was.
I know what Gates is.
I just became aware of it. I just got a piece of paper from the insurance company saying that we paid it out. And then what we talked about last year is that anything over $20,000 requires town meeting approval unless the insurance company pays it directly. So that's what we're getting, trying to get the insurance company to do is to pay these claims directly so that we don't have to have a town meeting go to do these things.
Sure.
The town pier one, is that from that accident, well, the boat, all right. What do we pay first and then get reimbursed?
We're trying to get the insurance company to pay the boat owner's insurance company directly. Because like Nancy said, if we don't, we have to go to a town meeting article to reconcile all the accounts. But these are just forecasting on what the renewal will come in yet because they're current losses and that's what our renewal's based on.
This happened during construction?
Actually, a lot of it's happened since forecast met and thought we could have a little bit of a pickup here when we did the forecast. And we've had three claims since.
Or 56% of our premium.
Yep.
So this is our deductible? Is that what we're paying?
No, this is just the annual budget, right.
So you know from your homeowner's insurance, you know, you call them, you say, I had a pipe burst, $30,000.
So it's gone up 10%?
And all of a sudden, next year, the value of your house goes up by $50,000. But hmm, nothing changed except I had a pipe. Same thing works for us.
So this budget does the general premium renewal for all our lines and also has another $20,000 in generally to pay deductibles. $5,000 for vehicle and $7,500 for property or something, or 10, I can't remember.
I think it's $5,000 for property.
Yeah, $2,500 for vehicle. So unfortunately, we're not going to get the pickup here.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on to the next one, workers' comp, which happens to be...
9:12.
9:12.
So workers' comp is a direct, the appropriation we need to do is directly revolved in terms of how many actual on-the-job injuries we have during the course of a year, which at least during my tenure, we've been fortunate and we have not had many at all. But the bulk of this makes up payments, medical payments, prescription payments, or settlements for people long before any of us were in this room that were obligated to pay out. Plus the administration of the account and the stop-loss insurance on it. As you know, this account almost was at zero every single year and didn't have any stop-loss insurance or provision to pay for an employee should they become permanently disabled. The town is self-insured. So we had a fund goal of $1 million for this account and, I'm sorry, $750,000. And after the FY '16 appropriation, I'm hopeful that we can cut back this line item significantly for FY '17, just when we're probably going to need it. So it's pretty straightforward. So level funded at the 257, as you see Nancy's provided what we actually pay out, so...
So we'll have close to 750 by the end of FY '17?
Yes, yep. And that's the fund goal. If we have a bad year, then we'll do that, but...
Put it back in.
What, I can tell you right now that the appropriation, all things being equal, for FY '17 will just be to cover the premium cost of the stop-loss insurance and the third-party administrator who actually does all our claims management.
Do you have a ballpark what figure that is?
Oh, I would say...
I said about 74.
Yeah.
All right, so it's a big savings, 100,000.
But the stop-loss has gone up...
174 is...
The TPA administration's not that much, the stop-loss insurance premium, it's not, the stop-loss isn't that much.
No, it's the ongoing...
It would be under, under...
All right, that includes the residual.
Yeah.
Questions? All right, let's go to the reserve fund.
He's paying all pass. Which is, I don't know the number.
90,000?
Reserve fund's the same as it's been the last several years, 90,000. We've been fortunate that we've returned a surplus to account almost every single year. This year, I think may be the exception because we're funding...
What's our number?
All of this, oh, I'm sorry. It is...
It's early.
One sec. Is it 120? I've had it, hold on, just had it.
There it is, it's 132.
131, 132.
Just, Lorraine, if next time, could we have on the...
Numbers.
Agenda? The numbers to correlate with?
Just put the budget number on the agenda.
Just primarily be good for us.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks.
So as I was saying, I don't think we'll have much of a turn back this year because all of the special election funds for town meeting and the election are going to be paid through reserve fund. And that includes the 2,000 copies we made of all the town meeting materials and stuff like that, election worker costs, police details, fire. So, but this is pretty good. I mean, most towns our size probably have a reserve fund that's two or three times the size of this.
That's interesting.
Questions from the board?
Well, zero expended to date, that's the only question I have.
Yes.
Yep.
They were at, the advisory committee allocates those funds? And rarely do you have, I, six years, we did very, very little. I don't know what you do.
It's usually in June.
It's because it's for emergency or unforeseen, so we've been waiting to get all the bills in for the elect, you know, instead of getting piecemeal bills, I told Kathy, we'll just do them all in and go to advisory at some of their meetings and approve it.
I think we used one time, it was like snow and ice, we were over budget and I think we...
Every year we do that at the end. So whatever we don't use here, we allocate to Shore Falls.
You can.
There was something we had done one time, I remember that. All right, other questions?
No.
All right, advisory.
2, I think, guys.
So who was it, Maury? Were you or was it Tony who said you want to cut that budget?
I think it was Maury.
Tony.
131, he said.
Actually, this budget...
131.
Even though it's really small, has gone up just because our special town meetings have gotten bigger and in years past, we were just able to Xerox the finance committee report, advisory committee report, and now it's much more detailed. So that's increased the printing costs.
You know, you have to.
Up 39 bucks.
I remember it used to be a handout, a piece of paper, and you're like, what? That's what it is? I mean, you got to make it better.
Is that a 2% for the...
Take a close look at that, I think.
Or something?
It's not much. So last year it was $7,875,000 and this year you're up...
39 bucks.
39 bucks, $7,914,000. Say, where's the $39 coming from?
That's the 2% for the clerk.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, let's get on to disability access. Now, what number is that one?
That's a good one.
549.
This is the money that we have to put in there in order to...
Which we never spent.
Which you never spend and then you... Five grand, I think.
Exactly.
So this money's allocated to offset financial assistance to people with disabilities to run, to utilize our COA van upon request. So we allocate the $5,000 each year, which is required by law, and we mostly turn back most of it each year.
Question on that is, clearly, it's not because there isn't a need out there. We, as a town, being able to broadcast it so people will take advantage of it or, I mean, I'm not saying that we're not doing a good job, but just...
Our van service, our van service is, part of it is our van service is $2 for a ride. It's a rather economical service that we provide anyway. And we have used, we did use some last year out of this, so, but yeah, I suppose we can talk with lender about just reminding people each year that it's available.
But that's with the council on aging. I was wondering, what about with people who aren't elderly and senior status?
For anybody who has a disability.
Disabilities as a whole, whether it's younger or whatever.
Yep.
And so what would, they use it for around town or do it a while in town?
Our vans are HP assessable. So they, we would arrange to provide the assistance to the van through that.
Is it just local transportation?
No.
So they can go...
Doctor's appointments and things like that?
Yep.[1532.23]
540, I think.
Exactly.
So this money's allocated to offset financial assistance to people with disabilities to run, to utilize our COA van upon request. So we allocate the 5,000 each year, which is required by law, and we mostly turn back most of it each year.
A question on that, is, clearly, it's not because there isn't a need out there. We, as a town, being able to broadcast it so people will take advantage of it, or, I mean, I'm not saying that we're not doing a good job, but just...
Part of it is our van service is $2 for a ride. It's a rather economical service that we provide anyway. And we have used, we did use some last year out of this, so, but, yeah, I suppose we can talk with Lender about just reminding people each year that it's available.
But that's, with the council on age, I was wondering, what about with people who aren't elderly and senior status?
For anybody who has a disability.
Disabilities as a whole, whether it's younger or whatever.
Yeah.
And so what would, they use it for around town, or do they use it to a lot of town?
Our vans are HP accessible, so they, we would arrange to provide the assistance to the van through that.
Is it just local transportation?
Um, no.
So they can go...
Doctor's appointments and things like that, that might be...
We take people all over for their appointments.
There are more people who could use that. You know what, I bet, I...
Well, the council on disability, I mean, what's the group, they know all about it. They, the board knows about it.
Yep, they review the budget every year.
There now, yep.
All right. Is it on the website? Do you know, anything like that, for ride, if you're disabled?
Probably. I can talk to the chair about, that the board...
I just think the fact that we allocated 5,000, it's not being used, to me, doesn't mean that there's not a need for it, I just, I don't think people are aware, but that, to me, given the size of our town, 18,000 people, somebody with a wheelchair, disabled, or somebody with a disability needing a ride to go somewhere, I can't imagine, we couldn't use $5,000 to drive not just in town, but to go to appointments, or whatever their needs are, to go to work, maybe, I don't know.
Can you talk Tracy Johnson, too?
Yeah, actually, it's a good one, of course, very good point.
Yep.
All right. Next one is the review of non-monetary warrant articles.
Which you did at your last meeting, but if you want to look at them again, I think they're, they're in the first section.
I guess it... Oh, you need to be... Use the two articles by petition?
Did you find it? No, we went, we actually went over, I gave the board a list, I'm sorry, I thought it was included in the first section here.
It is.
It is?
I was just going to say, it's the one page, right before the other.
Just before the 123 tab. Oh, there it is. Yes, so...
On this working list?
That's the working list that we looked at. Yep.
Okay.
That should total 33.
These are the items I got you. All right, questions from the board? Obviously, we're going to be going over each and every one of these at a future meeting when we finally get them.
Right, you're scheduled to do that, I think, your second meeting in February, after you reviews all the departmental.
And all the articles by petition, we'll have an opportunity, invite the petitioners to come, present, so that we can take a look at it, and then render a vote of either supporting it or...
Can we get, can I just make a request? The articles by petition, not the seawall one, but that, the other one, it's very vague to me.
Right.
Is, can we get some information prior to them coming in, or understand who the sponsors are for that?
The zoning amendments to section 490?
Yeah.
Sure.
Is that a, that's not a citizens' one, is it?
Yeah.
It is.
What about the 40R? Where is that one?
That's right.
Oh, that's on the other one, I see 40R.
That's in our zoning planning board.
Petition for zoning amendment to section, what is section?
That's a part of the zoning bylaws, and I think it's under, it's under the planning purview, I'm not really sure.
This isn't the driftway thing.
Is this the driftway? No?
No, that's a 40R.
Does it?
No, no, I mean, the other area on the driftway.
I think that's why I want more information on it.
Where is it? There was some citizens that were close forward.
Is it where, is it where they were, we were going to, the maritime school?
No, if it is, it's, you know what I think it is?
There's some mechanical issues with the petition article, because essentially what it does is it overlays the current zoning bylaw and has track changes on across striking certain sections, so it's very hard. I can go get it for you if you want to see it, but I think John took a look at it, we were trying to figure out what it even said.
Yeah, because it says track, and then you can see the additions in bold, and there's nothing bolded, so it's very hard to decipher.
We'll see when we'll come, we'll get it in advance and go over it, and then...
Yep.
Yeah, if Laura could give us a summary of it, or...
Excuse me, is this the 40R or the petition?
No.
No, no.
It's a petition.
And is this going forward a petition?
Don't know yet, I haven't seen it. We'll see it. I mean, all I, all we have is just the listing of it, not sure who the proponent is. We'll go through it, we'll have it vetted up, whatever we do.
Do we know what they want?
They've submitted it, so they've put it on the warrant, and so, through their submission, I'm sure that it's in here, but we have not, we're not listing it as an item to discuss tonight. But we'll discuss it, believe me. And we'll have backup to it.
Thank you.
Good. All right, let's move on, that completes our budget for...
You should do 1232.
123, what? I thought we were going to say...
Board of Selectmen.
It's your budget.
Oh, it's budget 123.
Budget 123.
Oh, 123. What the heck was, didn't we just do that with, we did it with town administrator?
132 and 133.
All right, sorry about that, folks. Town Administrator. All right, Tricia. So for the town administrator, you appropriated $676,000 last year, expended to date 191,000, almost 192. The request for this year is for $688,495. Who made that request? Was that you, or was that...
Well, last year you accused me of cutting my own budget, so...
Well, now you're increasing it, that's why I'm like, who made the request?
It's increased by 200.
Any of it. So the ultimate town recommendation by the town administrator for the board of selectmen and town administrator is 698,195?
689.
689, what did I just say?
698.
689, 195, sorry about that, folks.
So again, this is your budget and the town administrative budget, so it's combined, and the increase is driven by 2% contract increases for five staff.
Gotcha. Questions from the board?
Well, this just adds the two legal, this is contract legal?
So, this is a big budget, and, and the reason it is, is because of the contract bargaining and legal services. So all town council services are out of this budget, all litigation, special council litigation for land use things that aren't covered by insurance, and then the contract bargaining. So, as we talked earlier, we don't have a fire contract, there's money in here for if and when that contract gets settled. It also pays labor council for other labor-related issues like grievances, employee discipline. So that, that's the major driver of this budget, other than the salaries.
There's no other legal, all the legal is in this budget?
It's all in there in those two line items, legal services, 123, 5319, and contract bargaining.
So they, they look low, I mean...
They are considerably lower than they were a few years ago. Our litigation, I think we had several cases ongoing in 2009, 2010. Those have all gone away, and we haven't gotten new litigation in a number of years.
Funny because you...
We only have, well, Haringbrook was the big one, and that's fallen off in St. Francis. The only one we have now in terms of litigation is Mr. Bjorkland on a development of a parcel.
That's right.
It already once settled out, so we, we've been doing pretty good there.
And not only, Sean just whispered to me, saying, you know, in past, times past, it used, it used to be three figures, I'm not sure if it was up to 200,000, it was, it was a large amount in the early 2000s, mid 2000s, so it's significantly gone down.
Yep, so, so that's fortunate, that's, you know, that's a function of staff and the board's decisions and other committee decisions, so we're fortunate. And then, the other piece is if we hire new staff, and they're at different rates from the staff that left, there's a contract adjustment allotment in there for 10,000, that's a catch-all, or if somebody's position gets reclassified in mid-year. So that, it's designed for the maximum flexibility to deal with personnel changes throughout the year as well.
I just have a question on the part-time salaries, Tricia?
Yeah.
Appropriation, 19,013, zero expended to date, and then we're looking for 19,942. Why, why would there be zero expended to date?
Where are you, and which...
Are you, Mike?
Under part-time salaries.
That's probably Michelle, that she's being paid probably right now out of the Harborways and facilities, and then she'll come out of ours. So she's split...
It's the allocation.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying, okay, so it's like half a year?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's exactly...
Yeah, that's it. Any other questions, anybody?
I'd just like to highlight one of Tricia's goals here, which is a 40-year, multi-year goal with a five-year operating budget, a 40-year plan, so, is that, is that correct?
Yep, that was a carryover from this year.
Okay.
So...
I mean, once again, you know, long-term planning has always been a priority for you and your staff, so I think that's...
Well, I think, you know, it's taken us so long to recover from the lack of planning, and that's what's creating challenges for all of us now, so to an extent we can. We have lots of plans, open space and recreation, you know, sewer master plans, we have lots of plans along those lines, and recreation plans, and so it's really to synthesize all those and see what it is, so that we have a long-term vision and plan. I actually got this idea when I went to Florida, I was on vacation, and it was on a town's website, that, it was called the 40-year plan, and they just had every single aspect of the town, and what, you know, not a somewhat crystal ball, because nobody knows what 40 years old, but what they see the needs were, and how the community would be changing over time, and the infrastructure, yeah.
Well, what it does is it creates the short-term need, the midterm need, and then what you anticipate to be the long-term need. Classic example was water was kind of an ongoing issue that we're trying to address, and we realized, guess what, it has to be a priority, and we made it a priority. And that's why I think, you know, you know, I'll get on my soapbox, but I mean, you know, listening to a lot of people, sometimes in some of the social media that we have, they, they don't understand that this has been an ongoing process since you've come in, and there is a long-term plan of trying to address multiple issues. Unfortunately, I think some people don't realize that there's a panoply of all these different things that are going on all at once, they're focused on one, and they tend to think nothing's happened to it. But, you know, you've got seawalls, you've got water, you've got sewer, you've got buildings, you've got operations, you've got management, you know, it just baffles me when I see some of those things, that people seem to think that there's no planning, there's nothing going on, and I'm like, you know, since you've come on the department, the employees have done a wonderful job trying to plan going forward, and trying to make the town better, and so it's, it's great for, for you, Tricia, it's great for everybody in the staff and the employees, because they work really hard, and we see it, and the people who are impacted by it recognize it. It's just some of the people who, who don't, unfortunately, I wish they could sit here and see what goes on, because there's an onslaught going on. FEMA, for example, we didn't realize that was going to become as big a priority, but it did last year, took front and center for a good six months, you know, utilizing town resources when we could have been doing other things, that's what I mean, the staff, could have been doing other things, but that was a priority that we focused on. You know, and people talk about doing inventory on buildings, well, that's exactly what we've done to try to find out all the problems with it, because it hadn't been done in the past. That's not to say, you know, they didn't do it, whether they should have done it or not, what's important is, we're doing it now so that we get an idea going forward, what needs to be a priority, and where we put the resources towards. You know, I think you used the expression, you know, something about, can't be for everybody all the time, and your budget, I forgot the expression that you used, but the reality is, we try. We try to serve everybody equally, and sometimes we can't serve this person because of the priorities, but we're not forgetting them, we're going to be dealing with it. So I just want to commend you, and certainly Nancy, and Pam, and everybody else. It's, it's not easy to run a budget of $72 million and try to satisfy all the residents, but you guys have been doing a damn good job at it, so I just want to say on behalf of the board, thank you. And I also want to say it because I've certainly read a lot of stuff on social media, and I, that people just don't know the full facts of what's been going on, and how you folks have been doing this, not just for a year, but for the past six years. It's an ongoing building process to make this town a better, more efficient, and the services improved, so. All right, I'm off my soapbox. Moving on to new business now, discussion vote, a release of easement on the Appleton Field, so we can get off the budget. So we're releasing an easement on Appleton Field, Tricia, who's, are you covering that?
I don't know.
This is, I think that...
Right, is that you?
Already going on in a previous...
Town meeting.
I think we're just executing it.
Right.
Right.
Now, this easement is what gets us to the Appleton Field, right? And I think I talked this briefly with Tricia. By releasing the easement, do we have an ability to get to, I'm, I'm asking you generally, but it's not for an answer, do we have an ability to get to Appleton Field by releasing this easement, by way of another means?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That was the only question that I had. All right, so what do you need from us, is a vote?
Yes.
Move to approve the release of easement of Appleton Fields as follows. For consideration received, the sufficiency of which is hereby acknowledged, the town of Situate, a municipal corporation with a usual place of business at 600 Chief Justice Hushing Highway, Situate, Plymouth County, Massachusetts, acting by and through its board of selectmen, being the owners of certain easements, including a right to pass and/or repass to the Appleton Field, so-called, described in the deed from William L. Litchfield to Elise W. Carter, dated October 26, 1914, recorded with Plymouth County Register of Deeds in Book Number 1192, Page 519, and shown as dotted lines on Land Court Plan Number 5122A, filed with said registry pursuant to the authority granted to us at the fall of 2014 Special Town Meeting, Article 10, conducted on November 13, 2014, and in furtherance, in agreement with the owners of this subservient, excuse me, servient estates, do hereby forever release, discharge, surrender, and otherwise relinquish said easements, easement rights, including without limitation, any easement in the, any relocated locations, and any and all rights to pass, repass, or to enter the property subject to said easements.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Harris. Ruth, do you want him to read that again, so you can get it down?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
I like that, locate two relocated locations.
All right, moving on to the next agenda item, which happens to be a discussion vote, Stillwater's Wine and Gourmet Liquor License Renewal. Where is this, anyways?
It's a great business, it's more Citroen owned by two women.
Is that the winery?
Yeah, it was the old winery.
Well, not a winery, it's a...
No, you speak all the wines.
It used to be the winery, yeah.
Yes.
It's a, it's a great place.
Yeah, okay.
And this is just the last license renewal through the annual license renewal process.
The board of selectmen votes were new, the 2015 liquor license for Stillwater's Wine and Gourmet LLC.
Second. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. O'Toole, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Moving on to the next discussion vote, one-day beer and wine license for St. Mary's on January 24, 2015.
I'm on this board, so I'm going to use myself from this. I don't, I don't know that it's, it's a fundraiser from...
Basketball.
Basketball.
Yeah, you should. So a motion by who? Let's make the motion.
I'll, if I can, I can read that.
Oh, hey, you want to read it?
Yeah.
Oh, no, it doesn't matter, you can do it.
Here.
Move to grant tailor-made bartending and one-day beer and wine license for an event at St. Mary's for the Situate High School Boys Basketball fundraiser to be held on January 24 at St. Mary's from 6:00 to 10:30 p.m. Thanks, Mark.
Second. Motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Ms. Curran. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And one abstention. That's good, moving on to the next, a discussion vote, drain layers, drain layers license renewals. There are seven.
Move...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Move that the board vote to approve the 2015 drain layer license renewals for the following companies. McDougal Brothers Enterprise, anyone know this one? Araya?
I, 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 I.
Ara Brothers Inc., PF Spencer Jr. Inc., McEckren Contracting, Sean Farrell Excavation, Sporito Environmental Services, and Joseph P. Bonomi.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. O'Toole, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, discussion vote, open April 13, 2015 Special Town Meeting warrant.
Move to approve the opening of the April 13, 2015 Special Town Meeting warrant at?
8:58.
8:59.
8:59. Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Moving right along. Let's go to a discussion vote, the management of the WPA building. Tricia?
If you have a request from the last trustee for the foundation board that was set up to operate the WPA building on behalf of the town, there's been a request made of the town to take over the operation and management of the WPA building. The board would have to vote that, similar to what we did when the Situate Maritime Center board relinquished their oversight. That would require us to take over the utilities, landscaping, and scheduling of the building, and cleaning, insurance, and other attendant costs, just like we do Pier 44, Situate Harbor Community Building, and the Maritime Center.
Now, the building for Kevin, where, before maybe the trustees took care of it?
That town had absolutely no involvement on the building whatsoever.
Right, so we've...
But we owned it.
Mrs. Fitton took care of everything, along with the board.
So with Susan Fitton passing, you know, she did everything for that, for that building, and now, but it is town property, town owns it.
It is insured, their insurance policy lapses in August. I met with Mrs. Burbine, who's a member, and somebody who is disposing of Susan's estate. So I think it's a beautiful building, it's, I use it frequently. We've had a retreat there, we've had a bond rating meeting there, all the assessment, three of the four assessment centers have been there. It does need to be tended to sooner than later, however, that's why the vote's effective immediately, it needs to have the trash and cleaning removed. I was there two weeks ago for the deputy chief fire assessment. But I think, you know, it makes sense for the town to use it, and as somebody mentioned, we could use it for additional space, even maybe for the fax coordinator at some point.
Yeah, it's a nice little building.
Yeah.
I would assume, too, the operational aspect of it is pretty minimal.
Right.
Yes, in terms of scheduling, but, you know, there isn't a budgeted cost in this budget for it, so we'll have to find some ways in Kevin's budget. Again, Kevin's budget's sort of always in development, as far as, with more eyes on something, you're discovering more and more things. Now we have three full-time people in facilities looking at our buildings, so I, I think that there's some flexibility in his budget that could probably accommodate paying the bills through June 30, and if, if not, we just identify another source in June at year end. But I do know, I think there is probably some challenges paying those bills now, which is why we'd like to take oversight immediately. And Anne, I'm sure can answer any questions that the board has.
One thing I was going to say...
One thing I was gonna say is that, right away, we should probably have some kind of light, because it's pretty dark at night, and, and I say that because I've walked out of there after a committee meeting, and I'm like, oh my gosh, it's pretty dark. So this should be, and that's only for also preventing any type of.
Liability injury?
Injury, liability, but also graffiti or, you know, mischief going on, that's other things.
And the playground's going there now, too, so that area will really start to.
Get busier.
Yeah.
That's great.
The insurance is paid through, I think, February 1st.
I thought it was August.
No, I had, there was enough money in the checking account to pay the bills, so I got the account down to about five bucks.
Okay, so, so, all right.
And, so the insurance is taken care of, the liability. I turned off the phone, Susan was paying over $200 a month for phone service, which was.
Were you making calls from there, Anne?
Absolutely.
Was it security two, Anne? Is that why it was so high?
I have no clue.
That phone was there for sans.
Oh, all right.
Because that's where they mobilize out of.
But it's, it was difficult to try and come up with money to pay for the ongoing use of the building, and people still seem to think that $25 a use was sufficient, when in point of fact it is not. It's not. And, you know, I've been involved with that building since it was renovated, and it has pride of place, but I can't handle it, I'm sorry.
What was the building when it was originally built? What was it, what was its function? What was its use? All those years.
It was WPA building, workers, whatever.
Well, they built it, and that's what I'm saying, after the WPA in the 30s, what was the building used for?
Paul McCartney had his carving place there for a while, they did, they had another little playground, swings, and merry-go-round type of thing. It was used for recreation, it was used for crafts, and then, you know, over the last however many years, it just fell into.
Yeah, it's a great renovation, it was a good project.
It was a home for raccoons, and bats, and that was about it.
The reason why I ask is because I, I think the town should take it. It's town-owned property, it's certainly a historic building from the WPA ways, which, there are very few of them that still survive since the 1930s, but more importantly, it's a, it's a great architectural building, stone, unfortunately, we can't pick it up and move it, that's the reason why. But I was curious to see, I'm not sure what you, I say what you can use it for, what can be maximum use for it, renting it out, whether we're using it for function rooms or, or buildings, but I mean, I think regardless of what, we'll have to look at that, but it is a town building, the town should take it on, and it was very nice that former selectman, Ms. Fippen, did take it upon herself and pay personally for it, which is a benefit to the town, and, you know, it's time that we take it on and, and pay it. So I, I see no issues with that, we'll have to find some way to pay for it, and if it means some charges for costs, like, you know, for usage that we've done with other buildings, so be it.
Maybe Rick could use it, too, they have to relocate.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
There's a lot.
People should leave it clean the way they found it as well.
Temporary space.
It's a great building, it is.
Or offset some of the retrofit they'll have to do.
Excuse me, the other thought I had was veteran services, get them out of the closet here and put them up there instead, and then at private meeting, it's fabulous space.
It's, that's one of the things we've looked at, and, or we're gonna be looking at.
There's gonna be many, over the next couple of months, there's gonna be so many people that are gonna be. So let's move to approve the town of Situate to assume management of the WPA Building effective January 6, 2015.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor? Aye. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, for taking care of it in the meantime.
I tried.
All right, moving on to other business, correspondence and approval of minutes, I don't see any, so there aren't any, that's good. Other business. Anybody?
Just real quickly, two things, just want to say the ice skating rink is up, and a lot of kids skating on it, the last weekend, did it rain last weekend?
Saturday, it just opened this past year.
Yes, this Saturday, so it's already in use, parking lot's full there, it got rained, but I'm sure it's all frozen today, so that, that's a great little take there. And, and also, last week, DPW people, great job, just, I see them walking up the streets, just picking up trash, you know, early in the mornings and stuff, and it's, you know, they don't get credit for all these little things that they do to keep our town, you know, looking as, as good as they can, so. So want to say that, and quick sports update, boys' basketball team won tonight across the street, I don't know what the girls did, but every Tuesday and Friday night, one of them's playing right behind us, so. Support your teams.
Sean, Maura?
Nope.
Marty? Just a quick addition to Tony's with the skating, so a few of my neighbors who were in their 70s went, brought their skates down to go skating, and there were a group of kids playing hockey there, so they weren't able to skate, so.
So what typically happens with that, and again, it just opened once, is that if it's that popular, then we'll post times for hockey.
Okay.
So it will only be for hockey X, because when, it's for everyone, and if there's a pickup game, then, so we can limit the time.
It's tough with no boards, really, literally no boards.
Well, the kids that are playing hockey are six years old.
Right. Yeah. So, but if, again, we don't, it just was open the one weekend, so, and we have to do some things, Maura helped with trash barrels, we want to get some signage up there, we already, we had a medical call.
Are there gonna be lights?
Yeah.
It's been mentioned, again, you know, we're, we're learning as we do.
It's a work in progress, and I have to tell you, it's, it's a great opportunity to see how much the town uses an ice rink, a public ice rink. Be nice.
It's, well, Sean knows, it's been something we've been wanting to do for a while, I met with Jamie this morning and told him to make sure he had cocoa and things ready, so.
Two other light issues, did we ever fix the thing on the basketball courts? And someone mentioned to me the tennis courts, that they're, they're like, the lights are, I don't know if the timers are off on that, too, where they're on till midnight or something?
Which ones? The ones at Gates, or the ones here?
At Gates, okay, so that's not us, so.
Right, so it's something to look into, I don't know if they ever fixed.
I'll ask the superintendent, yeah. And then the basket, I, this first I heard of the basketball.
We talked to Paul when he was here.
Paul Sherry? Okay, I'll ask, okay.
Yeah, I remember that. All right, the only two things I have is, one, vote, folks, vote on Saturday, that's the election for the operational override, get out and vote, and then, other than that, we will have another meeting next Tuesday night, so with that.
Us?
Yeah, we're gonna have another one next Tuesday night. So with that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
One more other thing is the meeting for, at the Situate Community.
Oh, yeah, that's tomorrow.
Tomorrow night at 7.
Yep, webbless is going out.
And the hours for the, the polling hours are 7:00 to 6:00?
7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Okay. And I will not be at the meeting next week, so.
Okay.
Unscheduled meeting, I, I won't be around.
Because that's not on the calendar, next week's meeting.
No, we're having, I'm planning on having a meeting in the wake of whatever happens on Saturday.
Oh.
So I wanted to give everybody notice, because some people might, on TV, might not.
Oh, so not a budget meeting, just a?
It's gonna be an aftermath of whatever happens on Saturday, have a discussion.
Single agenda.
Next steps.
Okay.
Folks, thank you very much, have a good night. Take it a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Seconded by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor? Aye.